Noting the hour and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting online may use ACTON TV's YouTube channel found at the top of the agenda. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted on ACTON TV's website at actontv.org. I welcome this audience. We will talk about the rules of the road in a little bit, but first, I am going to welcome the ABRHS student representatives for an update. So Rohan, Molly, Dixha, I hope I've pronounced your name correctly, and Julia, if you're here and you have notes for us, please come up now. Hi Molly.
Hi, I'm Molly. I don't have much to say. It's been a pretty uneventful month at school. Nothing really exciting has happened, but I just wanted to mention that homecoming is this Saturday, and it's the first homecoming, and I think everybody's pretty excited about that. I think it's a good, I think it's good that the student council's doing it because I know there have been lots of complaints about how AB doesn't really have dances, and it's like, I think it'll be good, and I think people will appreciate it, so.
Anything else from our high school representatives? Hey, Julia, right?
Yes.
Hi Julia.
Hi, my name is Julia Zhao. I am a class 2026 freshman. This is my first school committee meeting as a representative, and I'm also a ninth grade class leader for ABRHS, and I'd like to talk about the Family Feud event that we put on, on the Wednesday half day before Thanksgiving, and we were able to put on a successful show that I hope was entertaining and eventful for all of the freshmen and sophomores that attended. And yeah, I'd just like to say that I think it was pretty cool that the class leaders and the teachers that were helping us were able to do so on only like four or five days of short notice, and I hope that we can present other opportunities and fun events like this in the future to create more class spirit, which I know that we've all been talking about has been a little bit lacking at ABRHS these past few years. Thank you.
Anything else from our, yeah, come on up.
Hi, Dixha, and thank you for having me here. I'm excited to be part of this school committee because I'm interested in student government. I'm also part of the student council, and I'm excited for the homecoming dance, and it's our first official one, so we've had, we've got more than 200 people attending, and I feel like it's great that we're finally moving on from this period of COVID, and we're having dances, and we're meeting with people, and I'm just excited for the future. Thank you.
Cut a rug, kids. Have fun. Anything else from our high school representatives? Thank y'all for coming. Alright, so, on to public participation. Per school committee policy, B E D H, members of the public are invited to speak for up two, three minutes regarding items that are not on the agenda. For items on the agenda, the public is asked to wait for that item. Speakers must be recognized by the chair before speaking. The committee does not typically respond to comments during public participation. So anybody who is here to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, come on up.
Hi, I'm Trish Hashem. I'm a Boxborough mom of three at the high school. I'm not happy to be here tonight. I'm grateful for the open forum. I'm grateful that you guys all volunteer. I'm a concerned parent. So, a book was brought up to my attention, and it's called, "This Book Is Gay." My husband's here, and if you'd like a copy of it, he can, he has handouts for anybody who would like to see the content, because I'm not going to read verbatim from this book, because it's pretty disturbing. And I just want to make it clear, if the book was called "This Book Is Straight," I would still have an issue with it. The content is inappropriate for our school. So, I just want to start with that, because I've seen a trend lately where I'm just trying to understand what the end game is with some of the content that is at our school. So, for example, the first page I put in here, it's the top 10 most challenged books of 2021. This is hanging up in my son's English class. So, book number nine, "This Book Is Gay." Okay, so it's hanging on the wall. What's that going to cause? Kids to go to the library to look for this book. This book is then taken out, pictures were sent to me of the content, and when I started to read it, I couldn't believe it. I was just absolutely stunned. I went to Mr. Light and Ms. Dean, and I was told I had to fill out a form about getting this reviewed, and it would be 30 days. When you read the content in here, I don't understand why this would take 30 days, so I'm just going to read a little bit of page 172. Doing the sex. Two men can pleasure each other in a variety of fun ways. Handies. Read this for yourself. The next paragraph is about blowies. This is not anything scientific. This is disgusting. As a freshman parent, I'm given the opportunity to opt in or out of sexual education. I opted in. It was based on science. This is not based on science. We don't need this in our school. I want to parent my children. Okay? I pay the taxes, I want to parent my kid. If, I know, I've had some friends say to me, "Well, it's even on the internet." Of course it is, but that's up to you as a parent. If you want to arm your kid with a smartphone, go ahead, have at it, but please, don't put this content in a library where I have no say on what my kids are reading. I'm just shocked and saddened, because we're in a great school system, one that should be really focused on educating our kids and not indoctrinating them. And again, I don't care if it's about gay or straight, it's inappropriate sexual content. But the worst part is, there's a whole page in here on teaching 14-year-olds how to get on Grindr, and for those of you that don't know what Grindr is, it's a sex app. Step one, upload a tiny picture of yourself to the app. Two, the app works out your location. Three, the app tells you who the nearest homosexuals are. Four, you chat them up. Five, because they are near, it's easy for you to meet up with them. This is unsafe. If this was Tinder, it's disgusting. What we are, what is wrong with us? Do we want to get a 14-year-old kid to go meet some pervert behind Kmart? I certainly don't. We need to parent our kids. This is wrong. This should have been taken out immediately. Have your meeting, convene, and get your group, and talk about this. But I'm asking this group, there's other content just like this, and it needs to be removed now. So I'm coming to you, you tell me what the next steps are, I'll file every single piece of paperwork that you need me to file. I will go after every single book. I'm not a book banner. I'm a parent.
I was not aware of that, and I will take your copy of that if I can. I'm Scott Smires from Central Street. On September 22nd, there was a meeting here, I watched it. I was very concerned. It was right after the incident at the school where there was a lockdown. It was very scary for everybody in town, parents, citizens, students, everybody was very worried about that incident. As more information came out about it, the days and weeks after, including the police report, which I requested from the police, and I read it in quite detail, you know, we learned a lot more about it. It wasn't just about an anonymous tip hotline. It was about another incident in another community with a student who was involved in it that was from our town also. The police from that community contacted our police the day before the anonymous tip went, went in, and that part was mostly left out of the story that we heard from the community. Particularly, Mr. Light, the superintendent, said, "There are details that I just cannot share, because it could identify individual students." Well, yes and no, right? You could have shared them a different way, instead of going down the go-to rabbit hole that the school committee and other leaders in our town go to. It has to be racism was the cause of this. Mr. Light also said, "You know hate in the community has been increasing here like it has everywhere." Is that really true? Do you have evidence of that? Do we have solid evidence of that? That brings me to further comments later on in that same meeting, where one of the committee members, who I don't think is here tonight, said that, "When white people are discriminating against ethnic minorities, they don't care whether you are black, or Chinese, or Indian, they bulk us all together." That is quite a racist statement. Then, that person went on to say that the main concern, that the emails, that she was appalled and embarrassed by the email sent to the school committee. I said, "What kind of emails could these have been? From my neighbors, and people in my town?" So, I asked Peter Light, "Please send me these emails that you're talking about." He forwarded my message to Andrew Shen, who I know is behind me. He sent me every single email that was sent to the school that day, and a lot of them, but not all of them, were from parents. And the parents were very concerned about what had happened that day, and they said, "We support you." They didn't say anything racist, and it's very concerning. You need to chair, you need to choose your words carefully and not accuse people of being racist before all the information is in.
Thank you, Scott.
Please choose your words carefully, and don't accuse us of racism. Thank you.
It's going to be a long meeting, if we continue that. Are there any other comments on an item that is not on this agenda?
Hi there, I'm Melissa Clayton. I have three boys in the high school, and I'm sort of here just to kind of an overall temperature check, I guess. Within the last six months, there's been two videos. One, that I sat with Joni Dean over the summer and watched, that Peter Light and Joni Dean, it was shown last year to the entire school, and it would had, it dealt with toxic masculinity, it was pretty radical, it was someone's opinion, it was shown to the entire school, and I only heard about it because another parent told me about it. I went and I watched it, and Peter admitted, as did Joni, it should never have been shown, it was someone's opinion, it should never have been shown. Then, fast forward, three weeks ago, my ninth grader is doing his homework, and I was like, "What's that video?" And he's like, "Oh, it's in Spanish," so I obviously couldn't understand it. This is a picture, if you want to take a look. It's two men that are, you know, dressed in leathers, it's very sexual nature, they're clearly all over each other, and again, this is nothing, I don't know if they're gay or not, if it was two women. So again, I sent it to Joni, and I said, "What are we showing our children? Doesn't even make sense." And Joni said, "The video will not be shown again under the guise of consistency," but I'm just curious how teachers feel that they can just show whatever content they want that is on their agenda, and there's no guardrails? Because I've shown that picture to multiple teachers in other school districts, and they were like, "It doesn't even make sense. Why would you show this to a ninth grader?" So it's just an overall observation that it seems as though our teachers can just do what they want, and there's no guardrails, and they can push their own agenda. So, thank you.
So thanks, we get it, okay? So if we clap after every comment, we're going to be here forever. We get it, but thanks. Are there anybody else who has comments on anything that's not on this agenda? Brilliant. Yeah, go for it. Wait, whoa. Hi Molly, what's up? Come on over.
Okay, I'm pretty angry after what I just heard, and I don't want to share too much emotion, but I am gay, and I think the blatant homophobia that we just heard was absolutely disgusting. You guys are okay with showing your children Disney movies in school where a main male character and a main female character kiss, and you're not okay with showing two men kissing? And I don't really understand the difference, because you show elementary school children a man and a woman kissing, but you aren't willing to show high school children a man and a man kissing. So, it's just, you say it's not homophobia, but it is very clear it is, and I think you guys should keep your opinions to yourself next time.
It's going to go for both sides, everybody. It's going to be a long night. We're all here with all this energy, we're going to bring it down three notches, okay? This will be a civil space tonight. We don't have to clap at every comment. We most certainly are not going to talk back to students. That's not happening. We can do this in a way that makes sense. I will hold us to that. This is not cable news. Everybody bring it down two notches. Peter.
Alright, so I'll...
Do you have a comment that is not on an item that is on our agenda?
No, I'll ask it with what you're just saying.
Please come up here, and then we are going to get moving.
Just, I guess I would like to say is, that last comment, I, I, this isn't about being gay and being straight. It has to do, going back to this book, and some of the things that are in there, which are disturbing. Talking about anal sex, talking about colossal handjobs, talking about blowies, like, that has nothing to do with, like I said, if it was heterosexual or gay, it, it doesn't much matter. And so, to be, to have that last comment, I guess I'm a little bit confused at, and...
We're going to accept comments from students just as we're going to accept comments from adults. I hear your confusion.
Okay.
You've made your point.
Alright.
Are we all set?
Very much so, and I appreciate your time. Yeah, I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Peter.
Alright, so, you know, just for clarity purposes, the school committee has a policy around concerns, around curriculum materials. If we see something that comes in that is not a vetted curriculum resource, sometimes we'll just resolve it very quickly. Other times, if it's already a vetted curriculum resource, we have a process to go through, to go through, that's outlined in both policy and procedure. When we get the concern, and we certainly did in this case around the book, we initiate that process, and we've done that, which involves convening a team to read the text, have a dialogue about it, and make a determination about what happens. The policy and procedure we have explicitly states that we don't pull resources out until it's gone through that full process, so we're just following the process that we already have in place. We think that's important to have as a process, and we're going to continue to follow that. So, I'll certainly update you as a committee about the status of that, once that decision's been made, and, you know, we'll provide people access to, you know, the reasoning behind the decision as well, because I know that different people are going to have different opinions about it, and, you know, certainly we have to make a decision, but people deserve to know why we make different decisions. So, we're working through it, and we certainly will do that. I think, you know, there's, there's not, I've said this to different groups that I've talked to in time, literature shouldn't be an emergency, and, you know, it's important, it doesn't have to be an emergency. Our kids regularly have access to all sorts of information on Google, you know, and it's a big world. That doesn't mean we don't take seriously the concerns that people have, but we follow a process to go through vetting of materials and respond to challenges to those materials. So that's, that's where we're at right now.
I'm ready for your update when you are.
Alright, so this is a very brief update, because I know we have a long agenda ahead of us tonight, and it is an announcement that I know will be a bit of a surprise for many of you. Marie Alteri is our deputy superintendent, and she has announced that she is retiring at the end of this year. So, I just want to take an opportunity and congratulate Marie. You know, not many people know all of the contributions that Marie's made here. She's been a PTO member, PTO president, she's parented three students through our school district, so she's experienced it as a parent, as a community member. She was a school committee member for a period of time, she served as the chair of the school committee, and she's worked in the district now for, you know, 15 years, and, you know, just her service to the staff and students of the district is absolutely commendable. She's been on different boards in this community, the United Way, all sorts of charitable organizations giving back to Acton and Boxborough, and I just want to make sure I say thank you to Marie, recognize her for that. I'm sure she's thrilled that I'm talking about her. I can see it on her face. But really, such a well-deserved retirement, and we are so indebted to everything that you've done, you know, probably for the last 25 years in, in this district, so thank you.
You got all of that?
That is my update for tonight, and now, I'll turn it back over to you, but I think it's coming back to me.
It is, it's coming back to you.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, so this is how this is going to go, everybody. We are going to have a discussion about our Student Resource Officer program. There are multiple options on the table for our committee. We can choose to end this program. We can choose to accept the memorandum, the new memorandum of understanding between our school district and our police department as it is, and be cool. Or, we can kick this to policy, to study it, discuss it, propose changes if they want to, under very specific guidelines, and then bring it back to us for a whole vote. I'm going to open a public hearing on this, and, as in just public comment. We are going to hear from, are we going with deputy chief or going with interim chief? Cogan.
Deputy chief.
Deputy chief? Okay, got it. Some of us got those, those emails, I just want to make sure that I recognize you correctly. And former SRO Sergeant Keith Campbell. We're going to hear from them after we hear from you, Peter. Yep. Then we're going to take public comment, and then we are going to have a discussion. Yep, yep. Our very good leader is making a suggestion that I open this window for a little bit longer. We're going to keep our, our comments to 90 seconds, and we're going to, we're going to see how this window goes. We're going to talk about that when we get there. Okay? So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to kick this to Peter, and then I'm going to invite our two officers to come up. I'm going to say it though, because, again, the energy in here is a lot, alright? We're going to have this discussion. We're going to act like we've got home training. We're going to listen with open ears and closed mouths. We going to do it like adults. We're going to do it like actual adults, sophisticated, educated, in this small town, neighbor adults. That's how we going to do it. And then, we're going to take a vote. Now y'all hear me and you see me, I'm not interested in the theatrics. This is about as theatrical as I want to get. If we cannot handle it, I will just not recognize people. I've got that power. I don't want to use it that way, but I will, with you neighbors, if we can't act like we've got home training. Y'all heard? Let's go. Good evening, Peter. Hi, Amy. Turn on your mic.
So, I wanted just a little bit of clarity on the ultimate, what outcome you are expecting from us at the end of the meeting. I didn't see a vote on the agenda, but I probably wasn't paying, paying attention. So, by the end of this meeting...
It says possible.
It says possible, so, so it's, it's still up in the air as to what we will do by the end of this meeting?
Yes, but I, I think we're taking a vote on whatever that decision is. I think that we need to, we need to come to some sort of conclusion. I think that the community is ready for us to make a decision, and, and even if that decision is, we're going to delay a decision until we, we learn even more, that's okay with me, but we do need to do something.
Thank you, yeah, no, thank you for that.
You're welcome. Superintendent Light.
Alright, so, you know, I want to just back up a minute and just kind of give a broad overview. These were actually my prepared comments for the night, but I think kind of given where we're at right now, it's, you know, a community, I think they're appropriate for tonight as well. I think it was Brené Brown, but I'm not 100% sure. I don't know if anyone has followed her, but she's a psychologist who studies human behavior, and one of the more notable researchers right now, and she, I believe, recently proposed a revised definition of empathy. And, you know, in the old version of empathy, it was defined as, you know, the ability to listen to someone and then walk in their shoes, right? And I think over time, we've learned that that's actually not possible, that we all have different life experiences, and it's really not possible to put yourself in someone else's shoes and assume that you can experience the world the way they do. And so, she posited this revised definition of what empathy is. And what she posed was, empathy is now the ability to listen really deeply to someone's experience, and then believe them, that that was their experience, even if it's not yours. And we all have different experiences, and I think, I would hope, that as the discussion goes on around this topic, or whatever topic we're talking about, that we can really just listen deeply to someone, and even if they're proposing information that's different from our own viewpoint, we can listen with some depth, and listen with a level of empathy, that we can understand their position might be different than ours, but we can believe that that's their position, because that's their experience. I'm going to just come back, I think the dialogue we all had around the mascot was a terrible example of that. On every single side of that, from district staff to community to school committee, everyone, we're all guilty in that dialogue of not really showing a high level of empathy for other people's positions, and I think often, what I heard during that dialogue, was as we were listening to someone talk, we weren't really listening to them, we were actually formulating a rebuttal to what they were saying, before we actually heard what they had to say. And I see that a little bit at the beginning of this meeting, and I'm not casting doubt on any single side of an issue, I'm just saying that as we talk about difficult topics, I'm hoping that we can approach it more as a dialogue around topics, and less as a debate around topics. Debate experts come in with a position prepared, and they come in prepared not to move on the position. People who go into conversations go in with a hope that they can learn new perspectives, and leave open the possibility that they might change their mind. And so I would encourage everyone, as we talk about school resource officers, and we talk about the continuation of that, or we talk about any other challenging topic where we might not have community consensus. Maybe we can hope to start shifting the approach that we all take, from one of a debate to one of a dialogue, and hope that we can actually value the differences of opinion that we have, and find good pathways to move forward as a community, rather than just continuing to bounce back and forth between issues, and, you know, approach dialogue like it's a game of ping pong, because I don't think that's really a healthy approach. And I'm, I'm saying that not absolving myself of any guilt of it, I'm saying it, saying I hope that we can shift this narrative, and I'm hoping that it can start tonight as we approach the next conversation. You know, from the public comments that have come in so far by email, I think what we can clearly see is that people have different opinions about the School Resource Officer Some of that has to do with school discipline, and some has to do with interactions with police or resource officers. So I'm hoping tonight that we can hear the various experiences with an open mind and heart, and understand, you know, a couple important ideas. Some individuals have had adverse experiences in our schools, and in their lives with police, and that others have benefited greatly from their experiences in our schools and with Everyone we hear from has an important perspective, whether it was via email, or whether it's sitting in this room, and I hope that we consider without judgment, because their perspective is different than our own, right? We're going to have different perspectives, and we have to be willing to suspend that judgment while we listen. I provided a memo in the packet with an overview of the program. I'm going to be upfront that our data about school police interactions is limited. I don't want to revisit the memo tonight, other than to answer any questions that you have about it, but I'm not going to revisit it all right now. That said, I also want to recognize it doesn't fully capture the wide range of experiences different students and families have had with our schools or with the SRO program. Comments and public commentary speak far better to that than I can. What I do hope to draw some attention to is that the decision to either have or not have an SRO program is complicated. There are a lot of different perspectives to consider. Inevitably, based on previous comments at school committee meetings, I think you're probably going to ask me for a recommendation, so I'm just going to go ahead and share a few thoughts. One, there is no absolute way to prevent violence in schools, including having an SRO. We've seen time and time again that any individual who carries a weapon and is committed to doing harm is going to do that. I don't think that... I don't think that alone is going to be the rationale why we should or shouldn't have a School Resource Officer Program. That's not what the data shows. Two, I'll put this right out there, even though it's uncomfortable. In any industry or sector, there are going to be individuals whose behaviors put at risk the credibility of the entire organization. This certainly happened with two of our SROs. They're no longer with us. There are things to learn from that and for how we can have guardrails to prevent the future behaviors, but we also need to be judicious in how we use that information to judge the rest of the organization. Number three, having officers with specific training around the issues youth and adolescents face, as well as an interest in serving them, combined with pre-existing relationships with school staff, administrators, and students, provides value. There are going to be instances where officers respond to schools regardless of whether or not we have an SRO program. And it's of value to us to have trained SROs who respond instead of leaving that response to chance of who the first person on scene is. Number four, our district has low credibility right now with our black community in particular, and it's justifiable. We continue to hear from black students and families about feeling targeted, disproportionately disciplined, or being watched. As a white male, I've never had those experiences with either schools or police. If I get two looks, it's because of my position of authority and a decision that I've made that has impacted many other students. I don't get them because of the color of my skin. Our data over time supports that we do disproportionately discipline our students of color, students who are economically disadvantaged or who have disabilities. This is neither good nor acceptable, and it's no wonder we have diminished credibility with people from those groups. I also think that the frustration with the SRO program is a symptom of the underlying issue and not necessarily the root cause. Resource officers are the end of the disciplinary pipeline in our schools, but we need to look at the whole referral process from the start to understand why more students of color are ending up along that path, not just at what our SRO program is. I think it begs the question, then, what should we do about it and when are we going to do it? I'll start by saying, this is a school committee deliberation with community input for a reason. This is bigger than any one individual's decision, and I'm going to respect the viewpoints of everyone on this issue. Here's my recommendation, though. This doesn't need to be a binary decision. In other words, you don't have to decide yes or no. We do not have to either maintain the program as it is or eliminate it. We can also choose to use the opportunity we have now to listen to the various voices we're hearing from, either in support of the program or who have had adverse experiences with the program, and use the information to create a program we believe meets the needs of our community. I'd offer a few suggestions for how we can take urgent action while also recommending that we maintain the SRO program. Number one, use this policy subcommittee to review all discipline policies, including those that govern student handbooks, and use your policies as instruments to shape the type of schools we want to have. At a minimum, update policies to require trauma-sensitive and restorative approaches to discipline, which are now consistent with Massachusetts law, Chapter 71, Section 37H and 3/4. Require schools to develop and take specific actions to reduce and eliminate disproportionate disciplinary outcomes. Have schools develop strategies, including those just mentioned, to reduce the use of suspension as a tool for student discipline. Ensure these procedures provide clear guardrails for school-police interactions. Hold us as administrators as accountable for returning this spring or summer with revised disciplinary procedures in our handbooks that are aligned to the vision. Number two, through either the policy subcommittee or some other ad hoc committee, use the new statewide SRO MOU as a starting point to develop an SRO program that's responsive to the variety of concerns we've heard. The new MOU requires a process for community input and public concerns to be addressed, annual evaluation of the SROs to be done jointly by the superintendent and chief of police, and protections for students and families with disabilities. Use those items as a starting point to add language that creates an effective MOU, and then charge the superintendent and chief of police with developing operating protocols consistent with the vision and which are publicly available. You can also consider expanding the requirement that we have for our professional staff for officers to complete anti-bias training if they're going to serve as SROs in our schools and work with our students. We can also consider providing access to trauma-sensitive approaches and restorative justice approaches that we're also using in our schools now. Require the school district to annually or biannually report disciplinary data publicly to the school committee. Require data to be disaggregated and asked questions if and when there were disproportionate outcomes for students. In policy or procedure, require schools to maintain accurate records of referrals to the SRO program so that we can better evaluate the program over time. Have us consider ways we can track not only referrals to the program, but the outcomes from those referrals. Number four, set expectations for a realistic and urgent timeline to review the SRO program again within the next several years to see if the changes we're making have the desired impact. If not, then consider taking actions at that time, including considering the elimination of the program because it's just not meeting expectations. So, I understand that some in the community may feel that those steps don't go far enough or should have been taken long ago. They may both be valid feelings, and I can certainly respect that point of view. I can certainly also respect the point of view who maybe feel like the actions go too far. I do, however, feel that having SROs who are trained in working with youth and adolescents provides a significant value to our schools, which should at least be given an opportunity to be re-envisioned in a way that creates more equitable and just schools for all of our students. So, thank you for the opportunity to address that. Certainly happy to answer questions along the way, and I look forward to hopefully a productive and empathetic discussion of an important topic.
Does the committee have questions about what Peter just said before I invite our two officers up? Hi, Rebecca.
I just wanted to ask, the last thing you said about coming back later to decide whether or not to end the program is an option, is there a time period that I missed?
So, I'm suggesting that committee sets a time period. If you decide that you want to go the route of let's really try and revision this and see what we can come up with, I do think there should be a timeframe to review it again. And at that time, say, is this possible to get it to work the way we need it to, or is this something that we have to look in a different direction?
Hi, Ginny.
Hi, thank you. Peter, thank you for that. You know, clearly, you've put a lot of thought into this. I hope and expect that everybody around the table has as well. I would love to have a copy of what, there is so much in there. And, you know, so, at some point, I mean, I think that there's a lot of points that, you know, can be picked up on and discussed and all of that, so I just would love to say, I'd love to have that reduced to writing at some point for us to consider. Thanks.
Thank you, Ginny. It's already in writing, and I actually send it to Beth, and in situations like this, we just publish it for the community. So, it will go in the next set of minutes, as is, is the superintendent's statement.
Are we ready to hear from our two officers? Gentlemen, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jim Cogan. I'm the deputy chief here in Acton. I've served Acton for about 35 years now, and I'm happy to say that my career began as a youth officer in the schools here in Acton. I started the DARE program in the late 80s, early 90s, and spent some great years in the schools and have fond memories of it. The program we are talking about tonight is a little different than that. And first of all, before I get ahead of myself, I want to say thank you for including us in this dialogue and having us here tonight to discuss this program. I brought with me Keith Campbell, Sergeant Keith Campbell, who is a former SRO, served in the role for about 15 years, and he can best speak to the program, and I will keep my comments to that. And again, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and please welcome Keith Campbell.
Good evening. My voice is a little, iffy, so I have my water just in case. Thank you for having me. I'm Sergeant Keith Campbell, the Acton Police Department. I'm here tonight, obviously, to talk about the SRO program, which I was a part of from 2004 until 2021. It's actually, you know, if I can just be honest, it was the best experience I could have possibly imagined in terms of being a police officer in this community. I grew up in this community, you know, became a police officer in 1998 and was able to take on this position in 2004, and I actually, you know, held it for almost a record 17 years in the state of Massachusetts. So, it's something that I really loved and was a cherished opportunity for me, and it was a real honor. And so, I thank the school for allowing me to be in that role. And so, I just want to talk about some of the things that we do as SROs. You know, there's a lot of misconceptions, there's a lot of information coming in and out that isn't always what we're doing here at Acton Boxborough. So, you know, the first and foremost, we're a security entity. You know, the schools have become targets, unfortunately, and to have just that extra sense of security, and that doesn't just mean just being present in the building. It means, you know, putting in security features. Our schools have come a long way in terms of how secure they are, the technology that we have in place, and, you know, the ability to make sure that that building, each of our buildings is safe. So, that's a real priority. You know, there wasn't a day that went by in my time as an SRO where, you know, in the back of my mind, always thinking about the building and the safety of that building and the occupants, you know, it was something that guided my job on a daily basis. But more than that, it's working, it's our role in working with the school staff to assist students who are in crisis. You know, there's not always an opportunity for the school to, you know, complete the work that they need to do in the school day. And so, we've worked in tandem to say, what can we do to help these students outside of the school realm? So, the information is coming into the school during the school day. We're taking that, you know, we're taking that information and working with the family and the student outside of the school realm. When school is over and a counselor can't be there to help out, or a principal or assistant principal can't be, you know, have eyes on that student, you know, so that comes in a number of different forms. You know, if a kid doesn't show up to school and a counselor's worried about them, well, you know what? I can take on the role of going to the house. It's not a punitive situation. It's more of a safekeeping. Is that student doing okay? Does that student need support? That's really the crux of what we do as SROs, is how can we support the school and in turn support the staff and the students? That's really the most important part of what we do. And, you know, we've, I'm just trying to make sure I follow along. You know, we're working with kids who might be, you know, in a situation where they don't have a ride to school. Well, we can't take a staff person out of the school to go pick up a kid. I'll do that. Let me go pick up that kid. So, we make sure that that kid is getting to school, and, you know, they see us as police officers as just a community resource, as someone who they can go to in a time of need. And, you know, we develop a trust with students and families just by doing whatever we can to help support the school throughout the day. And it's also, there's also an availability to, there's an opportunity for us to provide a learning opportunity, you know, so I've had the privilege of teaching. It's, you know, I taught, I started as a DARE officer, and it turned into something different. We kind of worked. I worked with the sixth-grade teachers. We came up with a plan on what's really, you know, the DARE program, while it was okay, it wasn't really what Acton Boxborough needed. So, we came up with our own set of a lesson plan that I was able to deliver, and it included not only, you know, decision-making, peer pressure, drugs and alcohol, but also a cyberbullying piece that we added to because that's what was affecting our kids at the time. So, I've also taught, you know, every ninth grader over, you know, the past, about dating violence and what healthy relationships look like as an invitee to the health classes. I've been at the junior high to talk about the digital literacy program and talking about, you know, cyber safety and some of the pitfalls that kids can run into there. So, those opportunities are unbelievable, and I'm so appreciative of them. So, in just terms of the things that we don't do, you know, as a policy, you know, the deputy can speak for it, we're not out to, you know, build crime statistics by being, you know, present around students. We're doing everything we can as school resource officers to say, you know what? Let's, if we have a crime that's reported to us, well, what are our options? You know, in 2008, we adopted an internal department restorative justice program that allows us the opportunity to say, you know what? Court isn't the best option for this particular youth. Let's see what we can do to keep them out of the court system, keep them away from a criminal charge and the spiral that that can create. You know, if a kid has an initial foray into the juvenile justice system, even just a clerk's hearing or probation hearing, they are seven times more likely to reoffend. Okay? That's something that, through our processes and trying to, and our programs that we have in places to say, you know what? We can do better than that. We can better serve our community and better serve our kids by, you know, holding them responsible for what they've done, but also allowing them the opportunity to grow. Because I could tell you, working in the high school and the junior high for as long as I did, teenagers make bad decisions. Their brains aren't equipped to make great decisions. I've done, I've been to a lot of training on how teenage brain works, and I don't think we want to hamstring a kid for, you know, for their future based on something they're doing as a teenager. That's been our approach to working with the schools. We're not trying to, you know, enforce our will upon the school. It's more working in collaboration with the school, with the counselors, with the admin teams. It's really, it's been a great relationship. I'm really proud of some of the work that I've done within the program. We also don't have anything to do specifically with school-based discipline. I think it's a common misconception is that we're a part of that process. There are things that happen. It's a building of 2,000 people. On a day, you know, there's going to be things that do happen, but when they're getting referred to us, it's because it's beyond the scope of what the school can handle. And those are situations, again, where we're going to try our best to fit it into a restorative justice model. We're trying to keep kids out of court. 80% of our juvenile cases over the last 10 years have gone the restorative justice route. We really try to maintain that. So, when those referrals are coming from the school because something's happened and that it's out of their realm, we're still, we're working, you know, as best we can to do what we can for that student and that family. You know, what we want to be is a support for the school. That's it. We want to be able to assist in any way possible. Do you need, you know, a kid who, does a kid need a ride home? Does a kid need a well check? Because, you know, they went home on the bus after a day, but, you know, the counselor might have been not sure if they were doing well enough. Well, we'll send an officer out to the house, a trained officer, an SRO, to make sure that that kid's doing okay. And again, it's not a punitive thing. I can understand that people believe, you know, I can't place myself into another person's, another student's shoes and say, I know exactly how they're feeling when they see me at the high school or at the junior high. I can't do that. The best I can do is be cognizant of it and make sure that I'm doing everything I can to make sure that they feel safe and that they feel supported. It's, one of the things that you get with an SRO is training. Over the course of my career, I've had over 1,000 hours of specific training based on dealing with youth, you know, and that could range from anything from dealing with kids on the spectrum to dealing with kids who are school avoidant to cyberbullying and the avenues that that can take and the impacts that that can have. So, all of those things are what we're looking to do in a support role. We're not looking to go and arrest kids. I was at the job for 17 years. I made one arrest in that time in 17 years, and that was because we didn't have any other options, and it was a pretty serious case. And that's not, and still, to this day, I don't, you know, I still wish we could have gone a different route with that. So, it's not, it's not an avenue for us to gain police statistics and, you know, people talk about the school-to-prison pipeline. We're trying everything we can to avoid that, but at the same time, I understand that kids might not have the best feeling when they see a police officer walking the halls, and I'm cognizant of that. I lived it every day, and I understand that they're, not everybody's going to be open to that. So, I guess the best way I can say it is if, you know, as the Acton Police Department looked at it, what can we do to have a school resource officer available from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.? You know, so if after school, we have a call, well, we wanted to dedicate an officer who worked the evening shift to say, you know what? If we're sending officers to that call... worked the evening shift to say, you know what, if we're sending officers to that call, we want to make sure that there's a youth officer who's trained and able to deal with that. That's how important it was to us. It's something that we always want to be prepared because, like I said, I've had so much more training than my fellow officers and I'm so much better prepared to handle a call involving a youth and their family and the dynamics that go with that. So when you're talking about a school resource officer program, that's what you're getting. You're getting the best that we have to offer in terms of dealing with young people. And that's, that's all I got. Like I said, I cherish my time as a youth officer. It was tough for me to leave the position, I loved it, I loved every day of it and I appreciate the school for having me as long as they did, so thank you.
Officer Campbell, would you be willing to take questions from the committee?
Yeah, absolutely.
And Deputy Chief, would you as well?
Yeah.
Thank you. Would you, are you good with standing? Should we give you a chair? Are you good?
I'm sorry.
Are y'all comfortable? Would you like a chair?
Yeah.
Or are you okay?
I'm fine.
Okay, Brian. Mr. Blumenfeld.
Through the chair to Sergeant Campbell and Deputy Chief Kogan?
Kogan.
Kogan, excuse me. I have three questions. First, Sergeant Campbell mentioned that he had extensive training to support youth in his role as an SRO. Can you speak to more detail about mental health training that you've received and your fellow officers have received as members of the SRO team of the Acton Box, or the Acton Public, the Acton Police Department, sorry about that.
Yeah, so I can tell you that it's a priority for us, and I know you can speak to it as well, that all of our officers are what's called CIT training, which is Crisis Intervention Training. So that's a baseline for our, just our patrol officers, but as an SRO, I've had so many more levels of that throughout my years on the, in the position, whether it's dealing in, you know, even just situations of runaways or, you know, recognizing child abuse situations, those kind of things. All of that stuff is, you know, based on how to handle a kid who's in crisis, what are the best approaches to do that? That's, it's a much higher level than your baseline patrol officer would have. And I can say, it's hundreds of hours of training in that regard, so.
And is that in particular for yourself or also the other SRO officers?
Well, I've been at it a long time, so I think there, you know, whatever opportunities for training we can get, there's a ton out there for school resource officers. I know we have officers who are newer to the position, so they're going to build up those hours, but any opportunity that they have for training, they're going to, they're going to take advantage of.
And what is the base requisite training required for an SRO officer?
Well, there's a, so there's a National Association of School Resource Officers basic training that every SRO would go through prior to starting the job. And that's forty hour, it's a forty hour course. And that's, but for us, that's just the base level, that's not where we're stopping, we're going to, to get as much training as we can.
Great. If you'll humor me with two more questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Second, you spoke about safety and security in the schools. How many SRO officers are actually in the schools at any given time during the course of the day?
Yeah, so for us during the day, my main site was the high school, but I would rotate between the junior high and high school as needed. And, but my primary, I had an office building in, at the high school, or an office space at the high school that I would primarily use. For our SRO who was assigned to the elementary schools, they would also be bouncing around. They didn't have a dedicated space per se at the other six buildings, but they were bouncing around to check in each time or, but also be ready for calls from administrators as needed, so.
Okay, so basically, there aren't SRO officers at every school at every given time?
Correct, yeah, we wouldn't have this.
So if there is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We wouldn't have the staffing for that, given the amount of buildings, it's, yes.
Okay. And then lastly, can you speak more about the restorative justice piece? And please elaborate how that has factored into keeping kids out of the juvenile court system here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
Yeah, so what we do is we partner with an organization called Communities for Restorative Justice. They started at the Concord Police Department and they were looking for a community to kind of spread their wings and they came to Acton. The chief at the time had kind of assigned me to kind of see what we could do to roll it out and, you know, went through a lot of training in terms of developing that program. We rolled it out and it's been, honestly, it's been the thing I'm most proud of as a police officer, because it's been wildly successful in terms of what we're trying to do with restorative justice programs is reduce recidivism, but also have, you know, those who are, I hate to use the word offenders, but those, learning from those mistakes and growing into better citizens. And it's been wildly successful. Like I said, we take as many cases as we can and, you know, do whatever we can to make it fit within that restorative justice model.
Great, well, thank you very much and thank you for your time and service today.
Appreciate it.
Hi, Amy.
Hi. I have a question, or I just want some clarification. So any kinds of interactions that you are, you're forced to have with students because of disciplinary issues that are outside the purview of the schools, would, are you telling us or are you saying that there will, regardless of whether there was an SRO or not, there would be a police officer called to the scene? So the only, the difference of having an SRO is that you know the person coming is someone who is well-trained, knows the kids, knows the administration, the staff, as opposed to just kind of whoever can show up?
Right, I think there's a continuity in terms of having someone who's dedicated to the schools on a daily basis where, you know, if you're, oftentimes we deal with a student on multiple occasions, with an SRO in place, you're getting that same officer who knows some of the background instead of, you know, in calling 911, you're going to get who's on duty. You know, and that might, that's going to change from day to day, so. And you're not going to get the same skill set in that scenario, so.
Hi. Thank you so much for answering questions, I think this is really helpful. I do have a couple of questions. Are there any female officers that have been a part of the SRO program?
Yes.
Good, so one?
We've had two.
And they're currently serving?
They're not currently serving, they've moved on to different positions or one has actually retired, so.
Are you looking for another female officer to fill that position?
We're not ruling it out. We have several new female officers who I would like to think someday would serve in the role of SRO.
Good, so I think.
Can I just, actually, one thing I would love to just have the police talk to, maybe you can talk to Beth Swol with the police in terms of social services, because I think that's been an area that we've been able to really, you know, have counselors work directly with the police on?
Yeah, sure.
And kind of some changes in your thinking around that?
So over the past ten years, we have participated with a group of police departments that report to the Concord District Court and have shared a clinician, and that's worked out very well. We were, for five or six years, we had one clinician one day a week. In the past, well, actually, it's just been a year now, we identified a need to have more hours, more than eight hours a week dedicated for clinicians. So we went ahead and applied for a grant last year. We hired a full-time clinician who works on our police department to respond to calls of mental health and to follow up with families or individuals who are in need of services. Instead of dealing with it one day a week and responding maybe four or five days later, we have someone now on staff that can respond to incidents as they occur and offer services to those in need.
You can keep going.
The reason I asked about a female officer is because if someone needs to be searched and they're a female, it should be a female officer doing the searching. And unfortunately, my experience was being searched by a male officer in town one time back in the day. Do police officers wear body cameras when they are serving as SROs? And especially when you're giving rides to students, is that being video monitored? Because my understanding is the buses are being monitored by video.
At this time, we do not have body cameras on our department. It's something we're looking into and actively pursuing. And I would say that if we do get body cameras, they'll be for all officers, not just SROs, not just patrol officers, not just for sergeants or lieutenants, but everyone will wear a body camera. And the camera will only activate during certain events. It's not something that records all the time. It is triggered by certain things, whether it be a response to a call, whether it be drawing someone's weapon, whether it be turning the lights on in the car. There are many different ways in which a camera can be activated, but on a typical day, it would only be recording events or interactions between the police and an individual.
Do you know what the timeline is to getting these body cameras?
Hopefully soon, I don't have an exact timeline, but something we're actively pursuing.
Supply chains and all that. And then my final question is.
I'm sorry, if I could just, you talked about giving students rides in that question. No, it's not, it's not filmed, but one of the things I do try to stress is that if I, if I'm, especially if I'm transporting a female, is to have a female staff person with me. Usually we can find someone who's available. And then I'm also over the radio calling in mileage and destination so that, you know, the timestamp is there in terms of what that transport involved.
Good. My final question is, why did the department not see the value in maintaining records of interactions before it was mandated by the state? Because unfortunately, we don't have a lot of data now to look at, it's only from the past year.
If you want to speak. I can actually speak to that, that's our data, not the police department's. So the police log all interactions that come into them. You know, the schools, you know, and as a school community member, you know, schools have, regulations around what schools keep for data have constantly shifted. And I think at this point, maybe short of healthcare, we're the most regulated industry in the world. But, you know, I think one of the things that we learn is as we know more, we do better. And, you know, sometimes things that seem like they should always happen just never seemed that way before. And so, you know, I think, you know, it's interesting that, I don't think the state was actually even entirely clear with schools that now they were collecting that data, so I think there's inaccuracies that we've had. But I think now that we know that that's important data to have, it's certainly something we're looking at.
Hi, Andrew, and then Liz, sorry.
Thanks, Karen. Thanks again for coming tonight, I know it's going to be an interesting evening. I have two questions for you. One is about the organizational structure of the SROs. How does this reporting structure map as an SRO to other non-SROs within the police force? What is the organization structure?
I don't quite understand your question.
So I guess you mentioned that there, you had your office at the high school and there were other SROs that would be available for other schools, which would mean to me that there is some level of seniority, a some level of management of what's going in. I'm curious as to what the managerial organizational structure could be for it. Oh, sorry, allow me, I'm curious about the organizational structure of this SRO program within the police force.
I believe, to answer your question, the senior off SRO was assigned where they felt most comfortable. And when there was an opening available, we would backfill it. So if a new officer came in while Keith was serving at the high school, we would need that person for the elementary and junior high or elementary school specifically. So they would serve in that, in that position. Does that answer your question or?
I think it does. When you think about the way that the organizational structure is set up for the SROs within the school district, how does that map to other organizational structures within the police force? Do they follow along? Is there another, is the career path the same way?
I think I understand what you're saying. I think, you know, from a supervisory standpoint, is that what you're asking? So in other words, like the two SROs report to Sergeant Krug, who reports to Lieutenant Sterniolo, who reports to?
Oh, yes. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So yes, that's correct. Sergeant Krug oversees the SROs within the department. He reports to Lieutenant Sterniolo, who reports to me.
Thank you. And the other question I have, over the course of the last year, there was a problem with a couple of other SROs that were no longer with the police force. What are some of the changes that you've made to the program to ensure that that kind of stuff doesn't happen?
We, you know, that was unfortunate for us, that's something that we own. We take full responsibility for that occurring, we dealt with it in a way that we felt most appropriate. The officers are no longer with us. Whether something like that is preventable, I don't, I don't feel, I can say it is. We're certainly trying to vet the people we put in the school to the greatest extent we can and train them. And we have, I think, proper oversight in watching them. And this has certainly opened our eyes to events like this and it made us much more aware and critical. And so, I don't know if that answered your question, but.
Well, I appreciate that and I know that when you're managing people, they're still people regardless of the role that they have. But my curious, my curiosity is stemming from, this is a significant issue?
Mm-hmm.
And as we're looking to move forward, you know, whenever you have someone who is a bad apple of any kind, is there an embezzler, they're violent, they're, you know, substance abuse inside of the office, in this case, inappropriate conduct with a minor, what is it that the police force has done to adjust since that to do anything to ensure that this won't work?
Again, it's opened our eyes, I think we have better oversight of the program and we are, you know, we have selected another individual to fill that role or to fill those roles with the hopes that they'll do the job that we expect them to do.
Thank you.
It's Liz.
Yes, Liz.
Is it?
Yes, yes.
Very good.
To build upon Andrew's question, what type of internal controls have you made or changes to internal controls have you made to ensure that events like that, which happened with the two prior officers, will not happen again? You said that you installed a different officer, you hope that, you made aspirational hopes that this wouldn't happen again. What concrete steps have you taken with internal controls to ensure that events like this will not happen again? As a former auditor, I ask that.
Yes, we have certainly looked at our policies, we have reissued policies, we have trained our officers in the policies. And again, we have better oversight with the supervision of those officers. I don't think I can stand here and honestly say that something is never going to happen. I don't know that. I think a majority of our, our officers are doing a phenomenal job in the role that they're asked to do. They're well-trained, they're well-supervised, and they have good policies that guide them in their role. Short of that, I can't guarantee anything.
Would you say that the preponderance of risk has been reduced as a result of these changes?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your patience and answering all these questions. I do have two, but I'm hoping that they're smaller. The first question is, it's a little bit related to how Andrew was saying, if you, so I know that you had mentioned that there may be times where like the elementary school maybe has just one school resource officer on. If that school resource officer needed additional assistance, would you typically, you know, pull from other SROs first or, you know, just for, you know, say Blanchard Police that's across the street?
Well, if it was, if it was an exigent circumstance in talking with Blanchard, we would probably call the Boxboro Police to assist with that, you know, if that information came in and it was, it could expedite the issue. But if there's a situation involving a student that one of our SROs needs assistance with, we're most likely going to contact the other SRO that's working to assist with that because they're the best option.
Okay.
Not, it's not always, it's not always an option, just based on, you know, if one's busy, like, you know, there's numerous calls throughout the day, but we do the best we can to put the best people into that situation, yeah.
And then my follow-up question on that, which is not the second one, so sorry, it's three, is in that instance where you might have to reach out to like Boxboro Police, is the hierarchy there that the SRO is in charge or would, for example, you know, you being a sergeant, if someone outranking you came, would they then be in charge?
I think, you know, if it were me asking a sergeant to come to the high school when I was an SRO, that sergeant would defer to my skill set, I believe, in that situation. They would be there as a support, but they would certainly defer to my. They would be there as a support, but they would certainly defer to my, you know, my knowledge of the situation and my ability to work with the school.
Is that cultural or rule-based? Just out of curiosity.
I'd say it's probably cultural. I just think, you know, like, I think our supervisors, you know, our other officers know what the school resource officer's abilities are, and I think they respect that, so.
And then my other question is, you know, being in this role for, you know, as long as you have been, which is absolutely commendable, do you have, you know, if we were to have a, you know, sit down and have coffee, do you have a list of ways that you would improve this SRO program? And if so, is that something you'd be willing to talk, you know, with the school committee about?
Yeah, I'd certainly be more than happy to work with anybody to help improve and streamline or whatever improvements would need to be made. And, you know, I think we work for the community. So the community's input is vital to us in that respect. And, you know, as, like I said, we want to offer ourselves up to the school as a support. And so whatever that looks like, we're willing to fill that role, so.
And do you think that you have suggestions? Like if we sat down tomorrow, you'd be like, yeah, I've got five things off the top of my head.
Yes, I could definitely come up with some things if we were to hash it out, sure.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add to that, that certainly my availability to meet with anyone for coffee or whatever at my office or yours to discuss your input and what you might have to add or ideas to change and improve our program. So we're certainly open to that.
Thank you.
So for clarification, Sergeant, are you currently working with the SROs?
I am not.
Do you train them at all? Have you been part of their training process?
Yes.
Okay. Do you consult with them at all?
Yes, so, you know, I think they rely on my experience, you know, in terms of certain situations as they arise because they can be pretty intricate. And, you know, I've seen a lot in my time. So I think they do rely on me as a resource for advice in certain situations, absolutely.
But your current position, you are not...
My current position is as a patrol supervisor. So I was recently promoted and left the school resource officer position to be a patrol supervisor, so.
So he works midnights and weekends now.
Thank you. Hi, Tessa.
So my question is sort of a what-if, but also concurrently, like, well, what is... So what is the process if a situation arises at the high school, maybe that's not disciplinary, that involves a sexual assault report or something like that? And say the SRO is not available in the building? Or if we move forward and there is no SRO, what is the process with the police department in terms of who responds to that?
If the SRO was not available, we would have a sexual assault investigator, trained sexual assault investigators, meet with that person and take the report.
Okay. Because I was just curious. I mean, I'm going to be honest. Our experience with the Acton Police has not been awesome in those sort of areas. And that did not involve a school resource officer. So that's why I was curious about what the process was about who responds to those kinds of calls. You know, this is a lot for all of us to think about. Imagine if there isn't an SRO, like how, we've talked a lot about the training that SROs receive. I think that something as a school committee and the training of our employees, you know, a lot has come up recently about sexual assault, about sexual harassment, about that area. And Rebecca's concerned there aren't a lot of female officers in general responding to these things. And, you know, we've talked a lot about race. But, you know, when you look at the statistics, the few statistics that we do have, overwhelmingly, the kids who are being disciplined are male. So sometimes that's because it's fights, sometimes whatever. I mean, I looked at them very specifically. We have such small data points that it's impossible to look at all of the things that kids in the past however many years have done. But I'm just curious about the training. You said it's a specific, I don't remember the words that you said, sorry.
Sexual assault investigator?
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
I'm just curious about that sort of training around sexual harassment and the awareness around that, given that most of your officers are males. And how that plays into this. I mean, to me, that's a really big discussion because as I said, our experience was not super positive. And so it makes me wary as a mom of a girl that, you know, to think about any particular officer not having that perspective of what it means to be a female who's maybe been harassed or assaulted. So I guess it's more of a comment than not. You answered the question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have four current female officers on our department, and we're actively looking for more. It's something that unfortunately, we don't have many females that apply for the position of police officer in Acton. But it's something that we're aware of and would love to increase that number.
Hi, Adam.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. I appreciate it. You know, I have a question, and it relates to, it's another hypothetical. And so, you know, I don't expect a fully formed answer. But, you know, we're deliberating whether or not we're going to continue with the program. And if we choose not to continue with the program, I'm curious what might change about the Acton Police Department's organizational structure, training, officers that you have in your force? What would happen? How might you envision the force changing if we didn't have an agreement in place with school resource officers?
I would expect it to change somewhat. I don't know to what extent that would change. We do, we have other schools in town that we also respond to and work with on a regular basis. The alternative, the Victor School and the Colebrook High School, as well as the many daycares or preschools. So there would still be a need, I think, to have an SRO program. And it would just result in us dedicating more time to the other schools.
So, you know, Peter touched on the trust gap between institutions in town and black families who live here. Can you speak a little bit? First, Sergeant, I'd love to know what training you might have received very specifically on bias, race-based bias, what that looks like and feels like in your training specifically for youth? And then I just want to know if you, as we are making this deliberation and as we're holding all families in, you know, close to heart as we're making this deliberation, can you speak to the trust gap? What does that mean to you? What would that mean for a new iteration of this program if we keep it?
So I can speak to the bias training I've had. I've done a 40-hour course as well as several other booster courses through the Middlesex Partnership for Youth, which is a state, it's actually the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth now. They changed the name because they're all-encompassing throughout the state. So I've been through a multitude of their trainings regarding bias. But in terms of, as it applies to the day, I understand it. You know, I understand my role as a police officer and what, and the impact that that can have on members of the school community. You know, I can remember a day when, you know, a student of color came to my office, and it's a kid who I've had a great rapport with. And he said, you know, "Why are you, why are you always walking through the area when I'm with my friends in the common areas?" And I said, "Well, what do you mean?" He says, "Well, it seems like you're looking to see what we're up to." And I said, "No." I said, you know, I actually pulled out a map of the school. I said, "These are the areas that I cover twice a day. I walk around the school to make sure that doors aren't propped open. I make sure that there's nothing out of place." It's part of the security aspect of the role. And, you know, but at the same time, he was taking it as, from a totally different angle. You know, because I walked through that area where he was with his friends. And it resonated with me in terms of how he was seeing the world versus how I was seeing the world. And that's something that I've been cognizant of throughout my time at the high school and the junior high. It's definitely always on my mind on what the impact is on students. I want to be there for them, but I'm not going to be there for every kid. Not every kid's going to be comfortable with that. And I understand that. But I'm going to do the best I can to be as open and as available as I can, so.
So taking that resident story that you just told and these new officers who are taking this role, that really matters to you. And I was part of the original DEI family group that talked about this issue. And your name came up multiple times, always positively. You have a significantly positive rapport with our student community, with many families in our community in your role and in your service. So I want to recognize that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And that's why I asked about consulting, because I kind of want to know, I feel like there's another gap here. There's some knowledge that's missing. I want to see how we can infuse that. So thinking about that story that you just told, how would you tell that story to these officers who are now in the role?
Well, I've actually sat with both of those officers and discussed, you know, those types of scenarios and those types of situations and the environment in general and what people are going to expect of them and what they're going to see and the impact that they're going to have just by being police officers. It's a different, it's different when you're out of school and you're dealing with people who are coming with various amounts of experiences, you know, some good, some bad. And, you know, they need to be cognizant of that. And that's something that I've, for our two current school resource officers, have spent a long time talking with them about and counseling them on, so.
Okay. Hi, Yabin.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for your effort to keep our campus safe to a certain extent. So I just out of curiosity, so you mentioned 80% or what are some numbers? So I just wonder, how many cases do you, does one SRO officer handle each year? And what are the percentage of the cases are safety-related? That's one. I have another thought.
Okay. So the cases vary year to year. Sometimes we're, you know, depending on how things go, the cases that we're getting from the high school vary. You know, sometimes there are slower years, sometimes there are busier years. And it's not really something you can predict. But, you know, I didn't prepare a statistical breakdown, but I can certainly do that for the years that I was in the role. And I can have the officers who are currently in that role put that together. But I can tell you that, you know, there's, like I said, 80% of, greater than 80% of the cases that we're getting that, you know, are criminal in nature, that, you know, could amount to a criminal charge, we're pushing towards restorative justice. Like, that's the avenue that we want to take for the benefit of that young person, for them in the present and in the future in terms of the impact of what, you know, the criminal justice system can mean to a young person. So it's, you know, no matter how many we're getting, we're trying whatever we can to take it out that door of restorative justice to make sure that their future isn't affected by decisions made as a teenager, so.
Okay. So to follow up Ben's questions, a recent incident, right? About the police officer, SRO officer taking advantage of the high school students. So I was wondering what went wrong, actually? And what steps? Is it those things can be fixed, basically, can be prevented?
Again, you know, as far as preventing things, things happen. I can't say that we can prevent all. We're much more aware of what's going on. We're much more in, just, we have much more oversight. We have better oversight. We have more involvement. And we do the best we can. But to say that we could prevent something like this from happening again, I can't stand here and honestly say that to you. I hope in my heart that it will never happen again. But I also realize that there's only so much that we can do. We try to pick the best individuals. We ask for the schools' assistance in selecting the individuals that we choose to be SROs. And I think we wouldn't have someone in the schools if we thought there was a chance that something could happen. That's the last thing we would do. You're welcome.
All right. These gentlemen have been standing for a long time. They've been very, very generous with their answers. So we're all set, y'all? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And now on to the next part. We are going to open this up for a public comment. Public comment will be for a total. I think we can do this in 20 minutes. I really do. So based on the number of individuals who are wishing to make public comment as chair, I'm going to limit these comments to... We think we can get this done in a minute and a half? We all good with that? All right, here we go. A minute and a half each. And we will not allow individuals to comment more than once. Thank you, everyone, who emailed your comments to the committee this week. We did read them all. If you are ready to make a public comment, please stand up. Let's make a orderly line, and let's get started. Again, home training, home training, y'all. We've done this civilly so far. I hope we can keep it that way. I really do. Yes, thanks. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Lent. I have two kids in the high school. I come before you not to have any emotionally charged comment about the topic tonight, nor have I come, nor have I come to with a predetermined opinion on the SRO program. I would just like to have a point of clarification and to echo a question that has been already made. Is it the intent of the school committee to actually vote tonight on whether to get rid of the SRO program or to adopt the MOU of understanding? And if that is the case, I would like to point out that the agenda for tonight, which is the required notice on the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, does not indicate that there will be any action taken on this, including a vote. You have appropriately identified in Section 4A and 4C that there will be a vote taken. So again, I know the question was asked in the beginning. You know, I came here to listen, as Superintendent Light said. I did not understand that there was going to be a vote. And I would like to avoid the issues, as Superintendent Light pointed out, with the mascot, where some of the school community felt there was not enough notice provided. This is a very emotionally charged subject. I don't have any emotionally charged statements to make about the subject. I would just like to caution this committee to please make sure that the steps you take tonight can be validated and defended. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
That's an accurate comment. It's not listed on the agenda as a vote or a possible vote. So that is something we should consider.
Okay. So it was my intention when we wrote the agenda, then it just didn't get on there. So we will then follow the rules, not take this vote tonight. We will either take it up in the next meeting on the 17th. Yeah. I really don't want this to go until January. What did I just say? Sorry, the 15th, my lordy, y'all. So, fine, we will not take this vote tonight. It was intended, but I get that part, so. There we go. So if that's what you're standing up for, we're not going to take a vote tonight. Good evening.
Okay. Everybody, thank you for the opportunity to comment. My wife and I have two kids at a worthy town, which we love, and we strongly recommend continuing the program for several reasons. First and foremost, it seems like it's a commendable program with noble goals, longstanding roots extending back decades, which continues to offer important officer-led training and many other worthwhile activities. In general, and I'm continuing to learn more things about the program even tonight, in general, it appears to have been a successful partnership between the district and police departments. It sounds like there have been some things that have been far from perfect that I'm saddened and disturbed to hear about. But I'd like to think there's also a lot of good that has come from the program over the years. In addition, there are other ancillary yet still important reasons worth considering. First, given some of the unfortunate anti-police rhetoric over the past few years, the program could be an excellent opportunity for community building between our future teens and future adults and our police force. Second, if there happens to be, God forbid, an emergency incident, having an onsite officer who can offer rapid assistance would be beneficial. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. So, oh, yes. Hi, my name is Viker Pareek. I have a son at Gates, and the daughter's still in preschool. But I have to say, we moved here for the school district. And, you know, I grew up in Brookline. We never had police at our school. Just, it seemed to me just an absolutely foreign thing. So to come here and find that there is in fact a police presence... and find that there is in fact a police presence in school all the time, I, I was really shocked and saddened and frankly appalled. Um, I would like to say that I know that you've done exemplary work over 17 years. I see you in the morning dropping with my kids. Uh, I'm just absolutely astounded to hear your story. I'm just, I find you just so impressed. So when I see you in the morning, I'm going to have a, a really big smile, just, just forewarned. Um, but I, I think that there's an exception that's going on here. I think, I think you're kind of the exception. If we have, you know, two, two SRO officers committed this thing, and did, um, did they have training? I'm assuming that they did, right? So even with that training, this thing still happened. We used to hope it doesn't happen, right? We pray it doesn't happen. But, right, it still happened, right? And it shouldn't have. The other thing is, why do you need special training for children? And shouldn't all police officers have this training? I know in Japan, police officers train for two years, right? Because it's a very complicated thing, being a police officer, with all the things you have to contend with, right? So it would seem to me that perhaps there could be a special services thing within the police department specifically for children or that all, you know, you know, sort of more substantial training, I think, may be warranted, you know? But I, I don't see a place for police officers in the schools. I mean, we all saw what happened at, at Uvalde. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brennan Bates. I'm here on behalf of, uh, my wife, Kristen Bates, as well. We are both elementary school educators in the next town over. Um, and our kids are in McCarthy Town. We absolutely love it. Thank you for everything you've done. Um, no matter what the decision is made, as a teacher, I so appreciate you being willing to step up and carry the burden, especially during a student crisis. We're all here for student wellness and safety. And I trust the collective wisdom, whatever decision you all make. As a teacher, I urge you to consider, if we take away this resource and the service that they provide, on whom is that work going to be placed? And is there enough room on that person or department's plate? As a teacher pulling out of a pandemic, I urge you, please be thoughtful when pulling a resource so we don't crush our teachers and ultimately the students in crisis. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm, I'm David Martin from Acton. Uh, excuse me for speaking quickly and tersely in order to get my comments in, in, uh, in my time. So several years ago, I met with 10 black students from our high school. We discussed many topics, including the police. Um, some of those, uh, black students said that officers watched, I think it's the North Commons where the students of color hang out, um, they felt like they were watched all the time. I verified with my youngest kid, who's white, um, that, who had, and who had recently graduated at that time, that they never watched the areas where she was. Um, so there are places where we can improve. However, the black students specifically called out one particular officer for compliments. So I think it's possible to succeed. Um, I appreciate the professionalism of Acton's accredited police department. For decades, APD has had programs like restorative justice, uh, instead of prosecution, and de-escalating domestic violence, um, with referral to social services instead of arrests. Three or four patrol officers are on duty in Acton around the clock. Patrol officers get familiar with their area of town and the people who live in that area. If we don't have SROs, the schools, especially the central campus, will be unpatrolled, an area equivalent to the population of one of the patrol areas. I think that we should define, uh, high standards by which we want the SRO program to operate and make sure we adhere to them. Uh, tensions and suspicions aren't lessened by separating groups of people, in this case, the students and the police.
Thank you, David.
Good evening, Alyssa Nickel. Um, I've already emailed, so what I'd like to focus on tonight is the process. Uh, first of all, thank you Chair Cook for pivoting to no vote tonight. Um, the invitation to send in an email or come tonight to make comments was sent out at 4:00 PM yesterday, about 24 hours earlier. One day's notice to craft an email or prepare comments and show up tonight if you didn't have other plans. Um, the email included a link to materials to review, 35 pages that included, uh, narratives, data, an advisory group report, and a lengthy legal document. This process needs to include student input. It needs to include staff input. It needs to include community input. There needs to be an option for anonymous input, um, where you're not sending an email from your email address that you can, um, be identified with. So I encourage the committee to really think about process. Um, I don't think we should be in a rush to make a decision about this program. Sergeant Campbell said that he could provide data from his 17 years of service on the interactions with these students. That was what was asked for a few months ago from the school committee members that, um, when they were presented with this need for signing a new MOU. So I'm shocked that it was not made available before tonight. Um, so I urge you to get that data and I urge you to, to take, um, care in getting as much comment and an option for anonymous comment as you can. Thanks.
I do want to clarify that I did announce this meeting months ago and that the packet went out on time. So I know that there's a complaint about this 24-hour thing, which y'all knew about it. It was out there. So I hear all the rest of it. We're not going to take this vote tonight. Not taking this personally, but I'm going to say, this hearing was announced. So bring all the rest of the complaints, but don't talk to me about that one. Good evening.
Good evening. Mike Graffio, uh, parent of student in high school. I'm going to speak fast. School resource officer has been brought into school to serve a number of roles, including protecting students from outside threats and educating students about safety. However, since SROs have been implemented in school buildings, they have been increasingly a part of daily school discipline and implementing disciplinary action on school campuses. The number of suspensions and expulsions have only increased since the year 2000, increasing over 200% in that time. In the same time, no reliable data has shown that school safety has improved at schools employing SROs. With the presence of SROs, schools, schools increasingly look to officers for interventions for code of conduct or handbook violations rather than school administrators handling these matters. And Acton is not an exception. Acton schools consistently lean on law enforcement for instances where mental health professionals trained to de-escalate children should be called. I have personally sat in a room with an officer in this room and an administrator in our schools today to go over disciplinary action that was not in any way, shape, or form related to restorative justice or otherwise. SROs and police officers everywhere are not trained for this. This is not part of the job. The impact of one incident of a student sitting down with an SRO can have long-lasting implications. Due to the awareness that the increased contact with law enforcement at school is traumatic to children, Massachusetts has made its recommendations. If we want to make meaningful progress towards serving all of our students by creating a more inclusive environment and increasing school engagement, our schools would be better served by staffing them with additional mental health professionals and providing increasing training and development of procedures for the alternative remedies listed in our new state law. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Lauren Rosenzweig-Morton. Um, I was a two-term select person in town. I was also a past president of Communities for Restorative Justice. And, um, during my time as a select person, um, we had hired a, a town social worker and I did a lot of work with youth and other family issues at risk, domestic violence, drug abuse in families, um, sexual harassment, uh, lots and lots of issues that I found that our police resource officers were very well linked in and very, very adept at addressing these things in a preventative way, where they were able to intervene early on with families and get people the help they needed. So that's been my experience. And I, I feel like they were very, very exemplary in, in doing that. What I see is a gap between perception and, and students, you know, are now kind of revealing to the principal and to others, people of color saying some issues that are their concerns. And my concern is the space between. You know, I, I read the DEI Family Report. It had excellent, excellent recommendations, just really wonderful, which I think Peter has, has brought forward as ways to improve the program. We need to start dialogues with students and make them feel empowered to be able to have these discussions and find out what really is happening. Are they being scrutinized? Are there just misperceptions? Are there ways that they could express to these officers what their life experiences were? A lot of students are coming from other countries. And it's really important for the police officers in town, for the social workers, for the teachers, for everyone, to really have a deep understanding of those experiences. So let's start the dialogue now. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Himajan Agaradi, um, from South Acton. Um, many of you know me, but I'm here as a former AB student. Um, we've heard a lot of comments today, um, about the importance, or lack thereof, of student, uh, of, uh, school resource officers. And I think that at the end of the day, it's about trust. Um, our school resource officers can only do their job if there is mutual trust between our students to them and them to our students. And we've seen that through the conversations that I've personally had with current students in the system, that that trust might be broken. And I think that warrants further research. I think that it's the responsibility of the school committee to decide how to solicit that information, how to get that feedback from students, to see what can be done to help restore that trust. Um, and I think that really does come through maybe taking a pause on this program and really evaluating what other options are there to benefit our students. Um, so that's, that's my one recommendation is really, I think at the heart of it, we do have to reach out to our students to make sure that this program that is designed to help students is actually helping them and serving them in the way that we need to help serve them. Thanks.
Good evening.
Hey. Um, my name's Leela Ramachandran. Um, I graduated from AB. I am an alum. Um, and I just want to talk about the fact that I think that a lot of this is coming down to like people wanting to feel safe, which I understand. I have been in a school with an active shooter. Um, and we've also just been experiencing collective trauma via the news and via COVID and all these other things. Um, and so I'm hearing the desire for safety, and that's important. Um, what I haven't seen is data showing that police actually do keep kids safer. Um, but I can tell you that a meta-analysis of 12 studies from Stern and Petros, Petrosino in 2018 showed that none indicated a positive impact of police presence overall on students. The 2018 Washington Post analysis of almost 200 incidents of gun violence in schools found that only, only two times went an SRO actually successfully intervened in a shooting. I also want to reiterate that I sent a slide deck with data and other things. Um, and reiterate for everyone that students of color and students with disabilities in particular are disproportionately disciplined, um, at a rate of three times or more often. Um, and so I just want to come back to like, what are we looking for police to do for youth that other people can't do? A lot of what I heard SROs saying that they do, um, is around education, is around, um, supporting students, and like, people go to school to be community health workers. And that, that is a lot of the education around cyberbullying and dating violence and a lot of these other topics. Um, and social workers, this is their job. And they probably receive more than a thousand hours. So I just want to encourage us to think outside of a box that we've been kind of indoctrinated into. Thanks.
Thank you, Leela. Good evening.
Oh, that is too tall. Hold on. Uh, my name's Monica Biswas. Oh, that's okay. It's fine. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, and I have, uh, two kids in the district. Um, I guess first I do want to say, you know, we've talked about trust, the broken trust in particular with students of color. And, um, having the two officers, the sergeant and deputy here, um, actually goes a long way to, you know, hopefully start to, um, move in the direction of building trust. I, I believe the intention is there. Um, and I'm not negating any of the good that might have come from the program, but I think, you know, based on the incidents that have been alluded to today, we do need to take an, you know, abundance of caution, uh, if we are, um, if this could put kids at risk, any of the students at risk. So I think for the program, if we're talking about, um, ways to improve it, I think there's three elements. There's vetting of the officers, there's training and support, and then there's accountability. So for the vetting, I think, you know, what I'm curious about is how APD and then even the district sort of vets the officers that are, um, coming into this position. You know, there's, uh, research out there that, um, police departments aren't inquiring into whether, um, officer candidates are part of white supremacy groups. Um, I'm not sure what the vetting is around, um, you know, history of abuse, assault, violence. Like, I'm not sure to what extent. And so the district, you know, maybe it could place additional, uh, requirements around that piece. In terms of training and support, and I hear there's lots of hours, um, you know, I want to come back to, um, what, uh, oh my gosh, that's so quick. Okay. Disaggregated data by race. I think, Peter, your point, I, I echo that as well. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello. Thank you. Scott Smires from Central Street again. I think if you're going to take some more time and there's going to be some data coming from the police department, you need to specifically ask them this. Please give me some examples of something that good came out of the officer's 17 years. Did he have students come up to him afterwards and say, "Hey, you really put me on the right path. You really held me out. Thank you"? You know? I bet you there's a lot of stories like that. And that's all we're trying to do here is make, that's the beauty, the, the value of the SRO is that they have that, they're not in the police station, they're in the school. They can possibly build individual relationships with students that are at risk. And when I say at risk, I'm saying there's a lot of kids that come from homes that are very challenging, uh, but there's also kids that come from good homes and they just don't have discipline, they don't have patience, they want to get out of school. You know, there's a lot of variables. Everybody's different. Everybody has their own personalities. Please ask them for some positive examples. I'm surprised none of you did that. And, uh, and I think you should consider keeping the SRO program. Thank you.
I don't mind holding sacred silence. Anybody else got something to say?
I already sent an email, so you have my complete thoughts on...
We need your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's all right. Just, I feel so at home here. I feel like I don't have to do that. Diane Baum. Um, I, uh, want to thank you for having, uh, starting a process that, uh, has integrity. Um, it's very gratifying to sit here and watch in honest and forthright deliberation, or the beginnings of one anyway. Um, you have before you, um, this DEI committee worked for over a year, the Family Advisory Committee, who studied this. And they have presented you with a roadmap to restore trust, to build in policies and procedures that make sense, so that we can relaunch this program as a program that it, that does, does what it says it does. Um, I have been on, um, the, this Communities for Restorative Justice End for about eight years. So I know, I, I, I see all the good that comes out of this program. You can't silo a police department and expect, um, community partnerships to happen. It just doesn't work that way anymore. Community partnerships are, are core essentials to community building and moving forward together. The last thing I want to say is that the MOU, um, is, the revised MOU puts forth a set of principles that, that are shared, common principles. And I think that that's really important for you to consider as you go forth. You're a policymaking board and the MOU is a policy. If you want this district to have a shared set of principles about, about the SRO program, then please look at this MOU carefully. Please look at the roadmap that has been gifted to you through the, the hard work of this DEI committee. I look forward to an honest deliberation that really takes into account the, the, all the trust building and the, the trust gap that you, um, so aptly described...
Thank you, Diane.
...as the, as the problems, um, that are, that are impacting this program. Anyway, I, I know I'm over my time. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak and, and thank you for your service.
All right, friends. This is how this is about to go down. Um, I'm going to ask the- I'm going to ask the question I asked in the beginning. Hi. No problem. Peter, can you please remind me, so part about this being so expeditious is that there have been, there have been voices that have asked us to just get this done. And so now I'm going to ask, this MOU that we are supposed to sign due to government regulation, when is it due? Did we get an answer on that?
Quite honestly, I think it's due when you decide it's due. The way it works now is the current, we have a current, we have an MOU with the police, and that's going to stay into effect until such time as you either terminate it or sign a new MOU. So right now, we're operating under the existing MOU.
Thank you. So clerical error has given us opportunity. I'm going to offer some, and then we can see where this goes. Everybody, we don't have to take this vote tonight, and we don't have to turn in an MOU. Everybody here has asked for more. Everybody wants to do more input. Everybody wants more voices. Actually, don't have a problem with that. Here's my modest proposal. We will have somebody, probably somebody who does special projects, I don't know who that would be. Make unto us a way to get anonymous data so that we can get the voices that we need to get, because it is noticeable that folks of color are not here, not a significant body. It bothers me. So I want to hear from you. It bothers me that there are not any student voices here. It bothers me. We didn't get any student emails. It bothers me. Okay, fine. You want an anonymous form. It's a special project. We gonna make it happen. We're going to put it in the town square on the Facebook where there are fiends, fools, and friends. You are going to fill it out, we're going to take the data, we're going to read it, and we're going to try this again. This is not going to get done this school year. We're going to take the time to get the data we need. It's at least not going to happen in this calendar year. Somebody's going to be upset that this didn't get abolished tonight. Those folks, I hope, will send us an email, hopefully reflecting their home training. It probably will, either way. If you have comments that you did not say tonight, and you would like to let this committee know how you feel, do so. You know what our email address is. If you would like to do that anonymously, we are going to give you a form to do that. Again, I hope you reflect your home training. I suspect that you will, either way. I want to hear from students. I want to hear from people of color. We will come back to this. In the meantime, this means, I hope y'all understand this, that the MOU as it is stays in place. So I'm just going to put that out there for you. Is that something we just cannot tolerate? Or can we live to get the data that this group of folks who came in here told us that they won? Hi, Jenny, and then Adam.
Thanks, Kira. Just for purposes of clarification, you know, I think that taking a vote on this tonight would be just, for a lot of reasons that people in the audience stated, a really bad idea if not, if not, you know, malpractice. But I do want to also just put out there a question, because we heard this a couple times, both from an educator and a couple other commenters, about, you know, replacing the resources provided, by my understanding, the town of Acton through its police department to the school. Some people thought it would be more appropriate for educators to provide those services. You know, we don't, I just want to make clear, and ask Peter to do it, that this isn't, you know, a bucket of money that we can reappropriate to hire social workers or more teachers or something else. I mean, this is a specific program that we could, you know, continue, modify, or choose to discontinue. But that doesn't mean that we have, you know, a pile of money that we can use to hire other non-police officer folks. And I am very sensitive to what the educator said today. Most of the work of, you know, discontinued programs, if not all, falls on the shoulders of our teachers in addition to all the things that have fallen on their shoulders as a result of COVID, in addition to everything that has fallen upon them due to the fact that, you know, we expect them to solve most of our problems and our kids' problems. So I just want it to be clear to everybody, to the extent you can clarify that, Peter, that that's not a choice that we have to make here tonight, as I understand it.
Yeah, I wanted, you know, just make sure I'm clear about the question, but I think it was, you know, do we, are, do we have control over funding? And could we choose to reallocate funding from one program to another? The answer, you know, is actually no, because the funding for the SRO program actually is 100% borne by the town of Acton, not through the school district budget, because we're a regional school district. We have very, very separate buckets. You know, we create a budget and we provide an assessment to the town, but the town develops their own budget, and they've assumed financial responsibility for the SRO program. If we want to think about the type of staff that we would want in place for the district, that would be, you know, within the district's budget, that that would take place, separate pool of money.
Hi, Adam.
Thanks, Kira. You know, hearing, hearing what you said and taking into account some of what Peter shared in the beginning, I think, you know, your comments actually warrant a both and. I think that we need to act expeditiously, but we also need to find a way to collect more information, but show that we're moving the process forward. You know, my suggestion, my request would be maybe we look for a sense of the committee around how we want to move forward with this, continue to take input over the next two weeks and have a vote at that point, so that we can show that we're taking some action, because clearly several, you know, more than several people showed up tonight to share us, share information. Plenty of people sent us emails. And so I think, I would be curious to know if the committee feels they have enough input now to make some movement forward that could be voted on at a later meeting, that may allow us to continue to move the process forward, because I think by not moving the process forward, not recognizing the, some of the input that we've received already. There are clearly some people who have a, would like us to make a decision in either direction, and I think it's incumbent upon us to make the decision, take the information that we get in the time that we have, and make that decision. You know, I think we, there's some, in addition to choosing both and, I think we also need to choose clarity over certainty. Are we clear enough now that we can move forward a little bit on this?
So you're proposing that we get a sense for if we want to take a vote next week? That's what you're asking for?
I have a question.
Go for Tessa.
We were presented with the idea of, do we keep the, maybe look at the MOU, because we have to adopt the new one, but keep it in place, keep the program in place, and then look again and see if it's, if it's working. My question is, can we, when we take a vote, press pause and say, let's look at what is working, what isn't working, and not put the, like, press pause on the program and then say, we're hoping to reinstitute it in some form after all of the deliberation has, like, the opposite of what was presented? Like, not keep it in place while we, while we press pause and say, this isn't working, this is, like, if that's what we decide, this isn't, you know, these are positives, but how can we build upon the positives in order to make this a better program that serves us, because maybe it's not serving us right now? Like, rather than just saying, we don't want SROs, we're all done, like, we're not going to... Do you understand my question?
I do.
Okay.
Hi, Amy. Then Rebecca.
So I would actually like to propose that we, we start now and get together a small group, a committee, that looks at the MOU, that meets with Officer Camp, Sergeant Campbell, that meets with, goes over the DEI suggestions clearly, comes up with some suggestions as to how we feel that this could be a positive program, and that's what we vote on, as opposed to yes, no, or let's change it. I mean, I think if you're given altern, if you, if you already, you look at the program, you look at the MOU, you give an alternative, then at that point, we know that the background has all been done, and so then we can take, make the choice of whether to keep it, get rid of it. But I just don't think, I'm not in a position to tell you right now that I want to either get rid of or keep. I think that there's, there are so many opportunities, there's so much information out there that we've already been offered by people who are experts and understand what's going on, that we should take the time to really look at that and see how we can adjust the way things are working. And I would not recommend putting the SRO on pause. I think we should just keep things going. I mean, I don't, I don't think that's a good idea. Go ahead. In the meantime.
Hi, Rebecca, and then Andrew.
I think, you know, one thing I want to highlight, like somebody said when they came to speak, part of the issue here is that we asked for information that we just weren't given, and then we were told, oh, we have the information, we just chose not to bring it. That's really frustrating, and that sort of draws the process out. So just from a public perspective, you know, just be aware that that's the situation. Funding, that's really important. Thanks for bringing that up, Jenny. I was aware that, you know, the funding for the SRO program isn't coming out of the school budget and hasn't since 2008 or so. It seems like that's something we need to work with the select board on then, in order to secure that funding. It sounds like the police would still need to have the SRO program for private schools, so that makes it more complicated. But I think, you know, we know that there are important things that are done that if we choose to have a different professional take on, we do need to add more staff, so we're going to have to find funding for that, and this is a really difficult budget year, so that's definitely something we're going to have to think about.
Hi, Andrew.
Hey, Kira. We did not hear from students. We did not hear from staff. We did not get the data about how the program's activated that we were asking for. And I think there's also some questions about how the police runs the SRO program inside their organization with respect to protecting from the students. I'd love to see some more information about this. Amy, I think having a group, having a way to look at the MOU and member understanding, as well as these other data points, is important for us. I think it's important for us to have a way to build out the next program. I also think it's important for the district to be a part of whatever that SRO program's going to be. And I'm not sure we have not, we have talked specifically about that, but I don't think we need to take a vote of any kind now. I do think we need to take the next two weeks to gather the additional information.
Hi, Liz.
I'm sorry if this is a reiteration, I guess, of what Tessa was saying earlier, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear on this, because as I'm understanding it, if in theory, you know, we said, you know what, we do want to vote tonight and we're terminating it, and then, you know, in six months, we're like, you know what, we've put together a program that we want and want to turn it back on, we may not necessarily have the opportunity to do so, correct? Because Acton could say, oh, we're not paying for that anymore. Is that correct?
It's not correct.
So like, if we, if we terminate the program, you know, since that's something that is, you know, decided by the Acton town meeting, I would assume, then we don't, we're not necessarily guaranteed to get that back, are we?
You just told us it's not part of our budget. It's part of town budget.
The technicality of that is probably no. You're not guaranteed that, because, you know, if you end the program, then the town's going to figure out what to do with whatever resources it has.
Right.
And then it'll make a determination about reinstating any resources. But, you know, look, I want to be honest, that the schools and police are going to continue to find ways to work together for the benefit of students. You know, it will look vastly different without an SRO program, but we're still going to have to obviously figure out how we're going to work together, because we have to exist and keep people safe.
Of course. I was just thinking, like, you know, of the two, you know, technically, if we wait and we keep the program in place, while that may not necessarily be the optimal for, you know, everyone, if we go the other direction, it could be much more permanent than what we would intend.
Okay. So I, there are multiple proposals on the table, friends, and it's past nine o'clock. Adam says that we should take a temperature check and possibly take this vote in two weeks. No?
Yeah, in two weeks.
In two weeks.
In two weeks. Ma'am. Yes, ma'am. In two weeks. Okay, that's the proposal. Amy just proposed that we make a working group, which would not, that would not get done in two weeks. Do you, you don't expect that to get done, done in two weeks?
I do not expect it to get done in two weeks, but I think that it's something that's going to have to be done unless the committee has already decided that they want to take a vote to get rid of the program or keep the program exactly as is. So if, if that's kind of where people are, then there's no point in a working group. But if they're, if people are in a place where they want more input, more information, and they want to be able to incorporate some of the ideas that we've gotten from, or that we can get from Sergeant Campbell, that we did get from the DEI that Peter has brought up, then that needs to be a working group, and I think that the faster we get that started, it helps us move along the process. It's just my idea.
Kira.
Hi. If I could, I think it's really important to really recognize that we don't have a deadline here. So I understand that there are people who wish that we act with urgency, and I get that, and there are valid reasons for that. However, we have pressing budgetary issues, we have a lot of other things going on. I don't think it's, it's useful to anybody for us to rush this by placing an artificial timeline on it instead of being as thoughtful as we can. Two weeks, you're talking about developing some sort of tool to solicit and obtain anonymous feedback. It is December. There is a lot going on in people's lives. Although you did announce this meeting, you know, that was going to happen on this date, I believe in September, there are still people who, it took them by surprise, because people have a lot going on. So I just don't understand why anybody would think that we need to take a vote on this in two weeks. I would be against that. I think we need to be thoughtful. Every single person here wants our children to be safe. Everybody, you know, wants the best program that we can have, or at least deliberation if we're going to retire it, to be thoughtful and thorough and not abrupt. So I think that, like Amy said, we need some sort of working group, we need some sort of vehicle to examine the plethora of information that has been provided to us and work through it in a, you know, in a reasonable way, which I personally have no confidence that I could do in the next two weeks, even, you know, putting aside all the new information we would be receiving. So that's my feeling.
Thank you. Tessa, were you proposing a third way, or the two ways I've got? Okay, great.
Nope. Not making your life any more difficult.
Sir.
I want to thank my fellow committee members for great input and provide some clarity. I think that we don't have enough information, and I don't think that two weeks is enough time to get it. I agree with all of that. But I also want to recognize that if we're saying we need to collect more information, we're also agreeing to keep with the status quo. And I think it may be important for us to share with the community that, yes, we're going to keep an MOU from 2016 or 2018 in place until we have the opportunity to continue to evolve the process, to put together a working group or an ad hoc subcommittee to collect more information. I would ask that that subcommittee come back with a proposal that includes the state's MOU with additions, because we can't change or subtract anything from that MOU, and present that to the committee again, where we would take a vote to say, okay, if we, if we can get this MOU signed, this covers all of the concerns from all of the people that we've connected with. That, that's a way to move forward. I think the question mark is, what do we do between tonight and when that ad hoc subcommittee presents us with what could be the MOU of the future? And I think it's important for us to, in some way, shape, or form, reaffirm what we want to do as a committee. So the vote that I would recommend is to say, we're going to keep the MOU in place, and we're going to create a subcommittee to evaluate this. And at the, at that time at which the subcommittee reports out, we'll then have an opportunity again to either reaffirm, change, or discontinue the program. But I think it's important to recognize the effort the people have put forward up till now to provide us with their input, for us to make a decision about what is the next step. And, and, you know, it could be a next step for six months, it could be a next step for six weeks. I don't think we're going to get the information in that time. But if we don't make a vote, if we don't take a vote, then we've not communicated back to the community that we've heard what they've said and what we intend to do next. The vote for me is more about an intention than it is about, we're going to move forward with the new MOU.
I agree with that. He said it better than I did, but I agree.
He's going to give us away.
I just want to push on one comment there, because I think I agree with most of that. I do believe that the group should form a working group around this. I am not sure... sure of the value in drafting a new MOU or providing commentary on that, because I think the decision that I think I have heard the committee want to make prior to that is whether or not to have SROs. I actually think the, the group would be better served using time to evaluate and provide rationale and study what the SRO program does, think about the various, you know, resources that are available, and make a recommendation back around that. And I actually think then, if we're reducing a resource in the district, provide some thoughts as to what needs to replace that service in order to provide supports for students. Because I think it's important to understand that when you reduce something, you have to be able to backfill it. I think one of the things that we're seeing in society is schools are increasingly being relied on to solve many societal problems that used to be actually part of a community network, of whether it involved, you know, local churches, of, you know, police organizations, whatever it was, YMCA's. But increasingly, schools are the center of all of that now, and that, but we don't have more resources to do that. And so, I just want to be really thoughtful to, if we don't do X, we should be thinking about what can we do as Y? And are we able to do that?
Okay, I want a beautiful, tangible way to get out of this. It is not a vote, because I cannot take one. But I want to move this ball forward, because we still have things to do, so.
I, I appreciate Peter's input, and I, so, you know, I think what, what we can do in the interim between now and the next time we meet is put together a proposal to create a subcommittee with a charge for that subcommittee. I think, I agree, like I said, I, I appreciate Peter's input, and I think the charge of that subcommittee needs to be two ways forward. If we're going to remove ourselves from the program, here is our suggestion. If we're going to stay in the program, based on the input and the work that this subcommittee does, here's what we propose as additions to the, to the MOU. I think we need this subcommittee to do work and present the options so that we can make a decision. Because if we just say, "Okay, we're gonna go, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna choose to move out," to Peter's point, what are our options? And if we say we're gonna, we choose to stay in, we should know then, what do we want to see as additions to the MOU?
Do I have to vote then?
No.
Do I have to vote making a committee?
No.
Next week?
You have to vote.
Kids use sensitive committee, but that's what we're doing, not a vote.
Don't, but if we form a subcommittee, don't we need to vote a subcommittee in place?
We should vote to do that.
Next time, okay.
Not tonight, obviously.
Not tonight, obviously, but next week. I think that we are required to do that, or maybe.
We did hear from teachers. Lots of that.
So it's 9:15.
Okay, fine. But, we did. We heard from lots of teachers. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. That is true. I acknowledge that. We will acknowledge that in the minutes. It is 9:15. What's good?
I just wanted to ask, because of the way that this is structured, is it possible for Peter to sort of try to implement some of the recommendations from the DEI family group? Because you work with the, the SRO officers, right? Like, without a formal MOU process?
So, yes, and we can allocate time toward that, but if the committee is headed in the direction of not having an SRO program, is that a valuable use of our time right now? Because I think there's a lot of things we're trying to work on. I, I actually would like to see us maybe thinking more about implementing some of the recommendations I gave you around student discipline, and moving forward with a more equitable and inclusive disciplinary model in our schools. State law changed recently, which we have to follow anyway, but I think it would be well-served to, in the meantime, while we're studying this, in parallel, start working on student discipline codes, and really thinking about restorative practices and trauma-sensitive practices. Because that's something that, no matter what the outcome of this is, we can control that, and that will make a huge impact for our kids. And I'd rather see us putting our resources there, and then figure out what we're doing with the SRO program, and then figure out how to implement recommendations. So that, I mean, we can do anything you want, right? That's, we work for you. But that would be my recommendation, is let, let's focus on what we can control right now.
Okay, great. So, we are moving toward creating some sort of ad hoc subcommittee. That's what I'm hearing? That's what I'm hearing, y'all?
Yes.
Yes?
Put that on the agenda.
We're going to put it on the agenda, and it's gonna say, "Vote on it next time." Okay? Hi Marie.
I'm so sorry. We do have a student here who wanted to speak, who hadn't stepped forward, and I wondered if you wanted to take...
Yes. Good evening.
Hello. I mean, I can, you can probably tell that I wasn't really ready to come, but I figured it would be important to voice an opinion. And I believe that it's really important to have officers in the school, mostly because they're there as a resource, and they're people there just to support their students, and most of all, are there to make sure that people are safe. And I feel like taking them out of the school could possibly leave the school a little bit more vulnerable. And to me, just knowing that there's people in the school, like, there to keep me safe, just makes me feel much more uncomfortable. And I know, even in the past year, there's been a couple nerve-wracking things, that we had a lockdown, and a lot of the students didn't know what was going on for well over an hour. And just knowing that there's people on the campus there to help and just be there, before, like, if you call 911, it always takes at least two minutes for an officer to get to the school. For me, just knowing that they're there, right on the dot, is just way more comfortable for me. And I hope that other people feel the same, mostly for students, because for the safety of everyone in the school, and for teachers, I think, for the well-being of everyone, it's just important. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down and saying that. Tell your friends. I'm gonna ask for their opinions too. Okay? Thank you. Okay, everybody. Okay?
Good luck for next time.
We got it? We got it all? My lordy. What is next?
Maybe three-minute stretch break, and then...
Three-minute bio and stretch break, y'all. And then we're gonna get back to work. Here we go.
Okay, everybody. Because we're gonna be here till 11:00. So if you've stretched, let's make it happen. All right, my friends, all right. You don't have to go home if you're not staying, but you got to get up out of here. If you have to stay because you got elective duty, then I'm gonna need you to take your seat. If you're hanging out to make a presentation, then do prepare yourself. Listen, y'all, if you don't, you don't have to go home. I hear there's a game and there's probably a place open playing it, so you don't have to go home. But you got to get up out of here. But we love you, bye-bye. Everybody who wants to be here, we ready to rock? All right, we are doing enrollment and class size updates. It's gonna take the time it takes. That's what I was just told. Hi, Marie.
I promise this is gonna be fast. We will go quickly. The material was in your packet. I have several colleagues here who are going to contribute. So we'll go fast.
Thank you, colleagues, for staying so late. We appreciate y'all. We know how long your work, how long your day is. We appreciate that you're still here, we do. Keep going.
Okay. And you will be able to, you know, use this data going forward. It'll be part of our budget process and so on. So this shows the four-year enrollment change. And it's come down. And from 1819 to 1920, we were down 155 kids. The next year, 177. Fifty-four last year, fifty-three this year. So we're down about 400 kids or 8% in the last four years. If we go back eight years, it's 600 kids. So we've been in sort of a gradual decline with a couple of years of kind of big jumps. The enrollment projection is right on except for kindergarten. So I know you saw that and I know you're not surprised by that. Basically, it was off by 44 kids and 33 of them were kindergartners. This shows kindergarten volatility. We've worked with Nezdek. Nezdek does our projections. And you can see, it says over-projection. It should say over/under-projection. But for a couple of years, the top line here is the projection. The middle line is the actual. And so for a couple of years, the actual was much higher than the projection. I mean, on a 300 kids, you're talking 20% off. And then we kept working with them. Now we're into our fourth year of it being way under-projection. And so last year and this year, we're budgeting to a lower number than the projection. So last year, they said we'd have 334 kindergartners. We have 298. So again, it was 36, off by 36. The year before, it was 60. And so we keep working with them. Hard to explain, but we budgeted for this year based on, I think, 310 kids. And we got 298 and we cut another section before we enrolled, before we started the school year. So we're definitely putting in the right number of classrooms. It just kind of is hard to look too far into the future when kindergarten is off so much. So 338 is what they're saying for next year. I'm already planning on something between 310 and 320, something like that. And so I'm trying to revise their projections to flow that all the way through. So here's the enrollment history and projections. Yes, we've come down quite a bit. We're at sort of just about the low point there with just about 5,000 kids. And this is K-12. Pre-K, I kept separate just because the pre-K enrollment is a whole different kind of situation. And then we're going to gradually go up a little bit over the next 10 years, but certainly not a lot. Elementary is really at the, already at the bottom and will be flat for the next several years. Minuteman, you've heard this already. Minuteman opened a brand-new building. They have more programs than they had before. Our kids are responding quite positively to that. So we've gone, as you know, Boxborough has withdrawn from Minuteman. So they are, Boxborough students are now based on space availability. This year, none got in. The Acton kids have gone from about nine per grade to 24 per grade on average. So that's phasing in and that's affecting your budget. And you'll hear more about that, or at least the money available. Junior high, only two grades. The drop has really happened at the junior high. And so they are just about 800 kids right now. And the high school took the longest to kind of drop, but it's getting there. And you can see, we're just around 1,600 kids. And we're gonna stay in that range for a while. We'll talk more about the foundation budget and Student Opportunity Act. The short story here is that we're at minimum aid and we won't get additional aid beyond the per-student minimum until we get another several hundred students. And then class sizes. Elementary, as the enrollment dropped, we were able to improve class sizes. K-12 at this point. So this looks like a huge drop, but it's basically, we went from an average of 23.5 to an average of just under 21.5, K-6. And we definitely progress higher in the upper grades. So K-1 right now is at the 1819 range. And we get more kids as we go. And then we end up with 24 or so kids in a class in fifth and sixth grade. The junior high class sizes have come down as well. A peak, this is an average 24. There's definitely higher and lower. And the principals will talk a little bit more about this. But the average is just under 21. And the high school, this is, was at an average of 22 and now is really just under 20 across. What's in your packet is really the, just the four main departments, but this takes into account more than that. And Joni will talk about that as well in a minute. And the other big piece of news, and this hasn't been fully updated to the new enrollment projections because I'm still trying to verify with Nezdek. But basically, the enrollment is shifting from Acton to Boxborough. And in this one year, I believe it made a full 1% shift. So that's based, the three-year rolling average is what your assessment is based on. But it's definitely moving toward Boxborough. All right, and next we have our, my colleague, the coordinator of multilingual education, Mary Ann Young. So come on up and I'll shift over there.
While Mary Ann's taking a seat, I'll just, I wanted to point out, we're at, this is not a typical part of our enrollment reports that we've done, but there are some really significant changes in our multilingual learner population that you need to be really aware of because it has major budget implications and program implications for how we're approaching our work.
They're very exciting changes, though, I hope. So first, I just wanted to talk about some of the changes that have happened this year in terms of the number of multilingual learners we are seeing in district. So I have a chart up there which tracks our enrollment since 2019. But what I really want to draw your attention to is from August of this year until last week, we have had an increase of almost 100 students. Since I created this graph, we have five more students that have enrolled. So every week, our number gets larger, which is really exciting. And our population is changing in terms of what countries our learners are from and what majority languages are spoken. So this is some historical data from some of our former English learners. So in the past four years, Chinese was our majority language with a lot of other languages sharing similar slices of the pie, if you want to look at it like that. And we have always been very diverse with over 40 languages spoken in district. But this year, our graph has changed. So we definitely have majorities that have shifted. We have a majority of almost 20% Portuguese speakers in our multilingual population, followed by Chinese and Spanish, which are both at roughly 13%. And then we have other languages. We still have over the 40, but their percentage of the population has shifted. This is significant for a lot of reasons. But one is that the majority of these learners are coming from countries. Our Spanish speakers and Portuguese speakers are coming from Brazil and Central and South America. And these countries were heavily, heavily impacted by the pandemic in terms of what kind of educational opportunities were available. So, for example, if you live in a rural community and you're accessing school through Wi-Fi and that depends on the infrastructure on a day-to-day basis, there's going to be many times where you're not able to access school. So we have students that are coming in with a lot of life experience, but also with gaps in education that we are working very hard to fill to bring them back up to where they need to be. This slide is just to share some information so that you can see where our students are. The significance here is that Conant and Blanchard have the majority of the multilingual learners, but the distribution of where our students are attending school is starting to become more equal throughout all of the elementary schools. And we are seeing increases in the high school and at RJ Gray that we've never seen in the past. So it's affecting all schools in the district. You know, not one school is more impacted. It's a universal thing that is happening. The other piece of data that I'm showing here is that the majority of our new students that are coming in are in their first two years in Massachusetts schools. What that means is that their needs for English language support are significantly higher than students who have been here longer. And we're increasing at a greater rate than the state. The state is 41 or 40% multilingual learners who are in their first two years, where we, as a district, are at 62%. This slide is also significant for a similar reason. We are almost at a place where we're 50% multilingual learners who are at the foundational levels of English language proficiency, 47.7% of our students. And then we have 52% who are more intermediate to advanced. In terms of service delivery, what that means is the students that are at the lowest proficiency levels have a recommendation from the state for double the amount of service and support that students at the higher proficiency levels have. And this is the first time as a district that we've had this type of distribution. We've historically had many more students that were in the intermediate to advanced levels. And that has changed this year. This is another slide illustrating the same thing, but I wanted people to see that there are some schools that already have a majority of foundational students, which is greater than the normal, not normal, greater than the level 3, 4 distribution that we used to see. And also, what's significant is that we have 31 English language learners at the preschool level that are largely at the foundational level that will be coming up soon through our schools in kindergarten and needing more support. And this is my last slide, so I'll be wrapping up. But I wanted to include this because the high school and the junior high have seen a large increase. When I first started here at AV, six years ago, I think there were 12 or 13 English language learners at the junior high and maybe a little bit more at the high school. So this growth has been rapid and increasing. It's a trend that's been seen across the state that we're having a lot more students come at foundational levels at the secondary, you know, at the secondary school level. So just this year, you can see the increase in our enrollment at the high school. What's interesting about these students is that a lot of them are also coming with the same types of gaps and also a lot of experiential knowledge. But when it gets to the secondary level, it becomes a lot more difficult to bridge those gaps depending on what grade level students enter in. And students there were needing a lot more support. So we're seeing a lot of changes that are very exciting, but also things that we need to think about when we're planning and going forward. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Yes, so, hi, I'll see you in a second. Can we talk about the distribution by grade level? So we just talked about kindergarten enrollment, right? But can you tell us about those new 300 students that we just got, 300? Is that what we just said?
Yep. There's new 100 students, but we're up to 335 as a district. 82% are in the elementary level.
Okay, great. So, but can you, do you actually have that as a grade breakdown? I guess what I'm really asking is, how many of those students are precious, precious babies? So that first, second, third grade? How many of them are coming in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade? Because we know that that really matters.
Yes, it's a combination, really. We still have the majority coming in K-1, 2, but there has been a substantial increase in 3, 4, 5. So we're working to develop literacy programs to help fill the gaps for kids that missed those skills prior to entering grade three.
It's very important. That was super crazy important. All right, somebody had their hand up. Who was it? Hi, Adam, and then Ben.
Thanks, Mary Ann. First, I want to thank you for focusing on the life experiences that these kids bring as a positive to what they bring to the district. I think it's really important to highlight that. So thank you for mentioning that. When you were sharing the distribution of languages that were spoken, I saw a big triangle for English. Can you share a little bit about what it means to be a multilingual learner with English as your primary language?
Sure. So that is usually students that were born here to parents that speak another language and have not yet attained proficiency in either language because they are learning both simultaneously. But since they were born here, parents often identify English as the first language.
Excellent, thank you.
Crazy important. This is important. Hi, Ben.
Quick question. Do you have the numbers in terms of multilingual learners comparatively to other districts in the area? So are we seeing this rise, this precipitous rise in, say, Concord-Carlyle, Lincoln-Sudbury?
It depends on how much housing is available in the district. So statewide, there's an increase in people immigrating or migrating to towns that generally did not have large populations of multilingual learners. But I am part of a peer group with people from Concord-Carlyle, Lexington, and those towns. And they are not seeing the same level of increase. And we have discussions around it. It often does come down to where affordable housing might be located.
Follow-up, sorry. What about in terms of gateway communities comparatively speaking towards us? Like with Lowell, Lawrence, Boston, Cambridge?
Yep, I mean, everywhere that had significant populations of multilingual learners are seeing increases. It's just a statewide or national even thing that is happening. I think anecdotally, probably because the travel has been made more open because COVID is no longer a factor in closing of borders. And then there's also visas that were, you know, numbers were cut as a result of the pandemic. So now, since all of those things have changed and we have some differing political situations that are increasing the amount of refugees and asylees, our numbers are increasing across the state. But at our, you know, our type of community, communities like Acton, Boxborough, if there is affordable housing, are seeing larger increases. And there is some planning being done at the state level because those communities that are gateway communities have been overwhelmed. So they're assisting with distribution to places where there might be more resources.
Gotcha, thank you.
Other questions? This is really important.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying so late. We appreciate it. And thank you for this data. It's extraordinarily important. We're grateful for it. Thanks for staying late with us. I'm appreciative.
I'm Jim Markov. I'm the principal of RJ Gray. Good to see you all and thanks for having us. I'll talk a little bit about our class sizes. And I think in your packet is my more formal report, but I pulled out some elements that I thought would be interesting to look at. So the top row, I kind of, you know, made some arrows. We, this year, have 825 students. As of October 1 or thereabouts, I think we're actually a bit higher based on what Mary Ann just talked about as well. We historically have been divided into eight teams. At this moment, those range from sizes of 86 to 111. And I'll tell you why such a discrepancy. And then from there, we break down a team into making individual sections or actual class size. Rather than just putting a table, I figured, yeah, we use colors to identify our teams. So that's why you see colors there. So in 410 students in seventh grade at the moment, seven blue has 107, seven gold 106, seven green 109, seven red is 88 students. That's not a mistake. We purposely, this year, seven red is the team that works with our compass program, our social-emotional learning program. And we experienced over the last few years, more notably, there were times that students with that particular IEP might not be able to access the larger class, the larger math class. Their anxiety, depression, or other thing preventing them from going into that larger section. And we were finding, okay, they spend a lot of time in a very supportive learning center. They didn't have access to the content from a licensed teacher. So on seven red and eight red this year, we chose to say to those team teachers, they teach four large sections. Their fifth class of the day is their ability to push into the learning center to meet with students who might not be able to get out of the learning center on that moment. We've been finding that it's been productive use of time. But when we did that, we had to make that team smaller. And so as a result, the other three teams rose in their size. Same thing in eighth grade. And so you see a very similar pattern by the four team colors that we currently have. Just in terms of thinking about, what does it mean to break down a class size at the junior high? You have to think about, all students will engage in these classes that are listed. They all have English, all students have math, social studies, science, phys ed, and health as a collective class that lasts the whole year. And of course, this year, we have a new advisory program that all students are enrolled in. Most students go on and take French or Spanish in addition to the classes listed in the first column. About 87% of our kids this year take a world language. And we offer both French and Spanish exploratories, or we tend to call specials from the elementary model. So art, or music, or Minuteman Tech, which we'll rename for next year, or DigLitt. And then we have gray block, which if you've had kids through the junior high, you may, you will know this. We offer band chorus or orchestra or a series of other gray block electives. So all of these things are what kids, most kids are entering. Some students is where I identify, you know, the students Mary Ann just talked about are multilingual learners. If students are kind of at a level of WEDA 1, 2, so they're still new into our country, they're still new into learning English, they will have two periods a day with our multilingual educator. They will not be in an English 7 class. Once you progress into more, into kind of the WEDA 3, 4 level, they take an English 7 or an English 8 class and multilingual education. So that's where I identify some students. We have some students who are performing significantly below grade level and are then, therefore, in math fundamentals. Some students access the academic support center or a learning center or have a speech and language service or go to reading. So all of these things are factors in how we decide, how do we, what do we do? When we take those eight, of those 410 kids per year, for example, coming into seventh grade, we break them into those four teams. And we do that in consideration of a lot of things, including which elementary might they have come from? You know, what's their ethnic background? What's their gender? What language choice do they, are they making? As well as certainly special ed services and multilingual language services. So we divide kids first into four. And then from there, we divide them into actual classes. When we build a schedule for students, we always start with what are the services that a student might need from their IEP. On certain teams, we offer certain programs. We can't, we can't be efficient by offering it on all four. If a student, you know, has a profile that might best be served by being in the connections program, they're this year, and many years, on seven or eight blue. And so that's kind of a factor that we start with. We know that, we develop first, what's the learning center period of the day for those kids to access? And so we kind of build from there, as listed there, the other things that we think about when we're putting kids in actual classes. I use math as its own slide for a minute just to say, and I'll start at the top. Math 7 is an unleveled class in the seventh grade. This year, we offer 19 sections of that. We have five seventh-grade math teachers. And every other year, we were offering 20 sections. But this is where that differentiation, where we do with compass, that, I didn't count that as a fifth section. So we have 19 sections running. The red kind of highlighted area is the most common across the grid. So two of those classes are particularly small, you know, 18 or under. Seven range between 19 and 21 students. And 10 sections are between 22 and 24. The table right below that, we offer two levels in eighth grade for math, math 8 and algebra 1. About evenly divided for who goes into which class. You'll notice that the section size for math 8 is, in this case, four students smaller. That is on purpose. We do know that students, you know, need that extra level of attention and support as they're working through that, as opposed to students who are in algebra 1, who in many cases are much more, could be more independent. So we purposely make decisions about class size based on readiness for math in that case. My next slide offers other samples of on-team classes. You know, we offer science in both grades. I only picked one to show you. So science 8, you know, we have 19 sections averaging about 22 kids each. But you see the breakdown there of how those are actually differentiated. The same thing for social studies 7, English 7, and Spanish 7. And again, those are all divided by, science, social studies, English, by 19 sections. World language is not affected by the compass model that we have. Those students, those teachers still all teach five classes. You have typically sized classes. We kind of live in two worlds where we have on-team classes that happen every day and are taught by math, science, English class teachers, et cetera. Then we have what we call off-team classes, which would be art and drama and PE and health. These are desirable and highly effective and engaging classes for kids. They tend to have larger class sizes. And it only is a matter of, on the off-team collective of teachers, there are four individuals, art, music, DigLitt, and Minuteman, for example, as opposed to an on-team class, there's five teachers from which we divide students. So you see that the classes here are quite, are two or more students larger as an average. I would note to you that art 7 and Minuteman Tech 7 are even larger than their equivalents, DigLitt or Drama or Minuteman, even though we offer the other grade level, the thing holds there. When we have a student who has a limited access to a full schedule because they have a learning center or because they have reading and they can't take all of the options we have, we often ask them, all right, of these four, what do you really want to do? have, we often ask them, all right, of these four, what do you really want to do? You know, and art and Minuteman tend to be one of those ones that lots of kids really want to gravitate towards for a very good reason, right? And then PE and health is our last list there. And again, those classes range. I'll note that the column that has 18 or fewer, even on this table, that's also as a result of that smaller red team size. When we're taking 88 students and dividing them by four, you're going to have a smaller section. And so an arts teacher may range from a class of 18 up through, as you see, six sections more than 25. And that's what I presented, prepared for you tonight, but I will certainly entertain questions if you have them.
Any questions for this hardworking man who's been here after a really long day?
Then Joni Dean is going to come take my seat.
Thank you. We, we honor, it's been a long day and you've been here. Thank you so much.
I knew it was going to be late. I didn't know it was going to be this.
We honor, you've got a long day. We honor you.
You knew, you knew, yes. Good evening. I'm Joni Dean, happy to be here. And I'll note it's almost 10 o'clock, so I'll go quickly.
And I'm going to have to ask you to, to, to.
Speak up?
Project. Thank you.
They're telling me in high school, I'm speaking too loud on the PA right now, so I will though try to speak louder for you. All right. So to follow in Jim's footsteps, I tried to include some colors. These have no meaning except for ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. And you'll see we have the least amount of students in the 10th grade and the most in the 12th grade. Our total enrollment is 1683 as of October 1. We have a few more students, as Mary Ann pointed out, since then. High school scheduling and class size is determined by many different factors, mostly rooted in graduation requirements. So they're listed here. You can find them in our program of studies. We require four years of English, three of social studies, US history 1 and 2 are required, two of science with the class of 2025, which is our 10th grade class. So 10th grade and on will now be three years in science, math, and two years in world language, where the requirements for our current 11th and 12th graders for math are two and world language is actually nothing. You'll see then physical education, arts, and another elective in order to graduate. That goes along with 100 credits that are calculated every year. But these are the courses that we have to embed within schedules for all of our 1,683 students. High school scheduling process is actually almost year-long. So you take into consideration all of those students. We have over actually 1,000 individual sections of classes being offered, hundreds of courses, and then over 1,000 classes each student takes can take up to six or seven courses, right? So that is a lot, and that's one of the reasons why it takes a whole year. You start in December with your program of studies, recommendations, it's February-ish. You go through all of this and you have to consider then what the students are requesting in addition to what I listed. We have hundreds of incredible elective offerings that we're very proud that we can offer students, so in addition to their graduation requirements. So all of that starts in March. There's an override process. We then, like the junior high, have to consider all of the supports that students need within their IEPs and other supports that students may need in terms of class groupings, co-talk classes, or support, supported, you know, assistance in their classroom. We create sections. Now we're in June, we create our schedule. There's a long process of trying to resolve conflicts. Departments are reviewing. Schedules finally released in August. And then you have lots of course changes that can start then and go actually even through November or December. That's just to highlight the complications of a high school schedule. Considerations, of course, graduation requirements, all of the student requests, which rely on not only the electives that the students wish to take, which again are quite impressive and I encourage you to look at our program of studies. And then also we have several levels in many different courses that, you know, we want to make sure that the student is in the appropriately challenging course for them. I think it's impressive to note, 88% of our students last year received all of their requests. And I think in such a large school with so many different offerings, that speaks to the individualization of our student scheduling process and the hard work of the individuals who work on schedules. And that's not just the data team that is great, but also our department leaders and teachers who try to work with students to help them. Of course, there's class size constraints and you'll see more specifics about that in a minute. And then, of course, we have to consider what supports are needed for students. I think when you take all of this together, the impacts of our scheduling process for students is that we do create very individualized student schedules. I think you'd be hard pressed to find two students that have the same schedule. And I think that's pretty amazing. This does though result in more variable class sizes with all of the different considerations that have to be put into place, even more variable than say a junior high. Because when you have so many different student schedules and electives being offered and graduation requirements that are needed, that can happen. Overall, I think that you'll find that all of this results in, you know, a changing year-long process of not only scheduling but placement. That's really not just June or July, but it's really all year long. We still have students changing classes around now. All right, so here are our numbers. If you look at the four subject areas, English, math, science, social studies, and world language, you'll see our overall sections that are being taught in each and then the average class size. So you'll see that overall our average class size is 20.6. You'll see in a later slide, that's up one whole student from last year, which was around 19.6. You'll see English is 20.7, math is 21.2, science 20.9, social studies 20.1.4. You'll see world language is a little lower, 18.5. World language just became a graduation requirement and we don't have supported classrooms right now in world language. And so that is one of the reasons that those classes are smaller in order to provide supports needed for students. All right, class size ranges by subject. If you want to kind of see how variable those ranges are, you can look across each of these. There's a lot of numbers up there. I'd say that most often we're trying to target that 22 to 24, but you'll often see classes and many classes that are below that. If you look at English, you see that there's 23 sections between the 14 and 18 range, 17, 19 to 21, and 25 in the 22 to 24 range. I don't think it's worth me repeating all of these numbers that are up on the screen. I think it's interesting to note the totals at the bottom. So in the 22 to 24 range, we have 97 sections. In the 14 to 18 range, we have 124.5. Clearly, we have very few 31 to 33 in math. These are the comparisons between last year and this year. So I thought it was noteworthy to note that most have gone up. A half or one student in each world language went down slightly. And our overall class size between last year and this year is 19.6 to 20.6. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for this hardworking, working woman? Hi, Yevan.
Quick one, probably is not related to this. I'm just wondering, do you allow, say, grade 10 to take grade 12 class?
Grade 10 to take?
Grade 10 student to take grade 12 class.
Grade 10 to take grade 12 classes?
Yeah.
There are certainly classes that have 10th and 12th graders in them. I think you often wouldn't find a 10th grader in, say, a calculus class, which is usually a 12th grade class. So I'm not exactly sure what you're asking, but if, if that's the appropriate class for a student, then, then we would allow it. And there are many classes in which there are mixed grades. Sometimes you'll find, say, I mean, I'm using math again, but you can find ninth and 10th graders in a geometry course.
Then I'm asking, this is, because that will offer another degree of freedom to change the class size, right?
Sure. The sequence though in graduation requirements, like if you think of English, there's, there's an English 1, 2, 3, and 4, and they usually coincide with the ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade year. The, the 12th grade years, often you can take electives, but you'll mostly find 12th graders in those courses. But it does help that you can, you don't have to always have only ninth graders in a class.
Hi, Adam.
I have a quick question. So, you know, given where you're at today, given the fact that you just got off of your one month where I didn't see anything on your calendar that related to planning for class sizes in November, and that the fact that the policy subcommittee is looking at putting forward a recommendation to have a larger class size, how much time do you need to back that into the schedule? At what point do you need to get from the school committee a recommendation on a class size so that you can plan that in this year-long master scheduling process to be okay for next year?
I mean, that's an interesting question. I mean, technically, at any point, you could, you could tell us in March, our class size is going to be a certain amount. And then that would just change the number of sections that we offer that would then impact the number of teachers that we have. I think where that could impact more realistically, the scheduling process just is in terms of supports that we can offer and also electives that we could offer. So it would be helpful to know that information sooner. I think the biggest impact though is for overall class size. So for students, it's how many other students are going to be in their class and then teachers that we have in terms of positions, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
I wanted to, I do, I wanted to get home.
So we have elementary school, English class is also like 20, right? So here is also class size, English is also 20. I mean, do you expect, so I would expect for elementary class size, probably should be a small, low, smaller than the high school, right? I just wanted to hear your comment.
Sure, I would in general agree with that. My expertise is in, is in high school. I know that one difference between high school and elementary school is that if you're talking about a high school teacher, they're seeing 80 to 120 different students a day where an elementary school teacher of, of a classroom would be seeing 20 students in that day with, with different subjects. So I think that's a little bit of a difference, especially when you're talking about supports and getting to know the students individually and then working with all the different providers for those students. But in general, I would say, yes, I don't see a reason, you know, I would think that, you know, high school class sizes shouldn't be 15 and elementary is 30 or something, right? Is that what you're asking? Okay.
You are seen. It's been a long day.
I was going to try to do that before 10, but I didn't make it. I'm sorry. Have a good night.
Thank you so much, y'all. Thank you for staying late. All y'all get out of here. Good night, good night, good night. Y'all work so hard. We see you.
Thank you, everyone.
Name and if any member would like it held, please say hold. Members do not have to have attended a meeting to vote on the minutes. Item one, approval of the ABRSC meeting minutes of 11:17 to 22. Item two, donation of $2,000 to athletics from Special Olympics for Unified Basketball Nothing was held, so we're good, right?
So moved.
Thank you. That was Adam and Tessa. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Great, so that passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to subcommittee member reports. Mr. Schwartz, do you have anything to say about community engagement?
The Acton Box for a Regional School District Community Engagement Subcommittee met on November 18, 2022. The community engagement has a responsibility to connect the school community to the community. Our community is working on simplifying communication, providing more transparency and identifying multiple points of message distribution. We will create a school committee 101 to more easily explain school committee businesses and practices. Additionally, we're planning a work session for the school committee in the new year to provide alignment and methods of engagement. Our next meeting is in approximately 25 minutes at 10:45 a.m. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Ms. Kremer, do you have anything from policy?
I'm a morning person. So what we have at page 92 of your packet is, for real, is, you know, what we heard tonight from, from Jim and from Joni is just a sampling of what the policy subcommittee has been hearing when we have enough members show up to actually hold meetings about the class sizes at the upper grade levels. And so I think it's safe to say that you're all have been treated to a small taste of what we've been wrestling with, with respect to our charge to set some, you know, limits around upper grade level class sizes. So it's very complicated. And you know, there, if, if this is something that is done with any particular, you know, enforcement mechanism or set in stone, there is going to be all kinds of collateral damage that a, you know, non educator and somebody who's not trained in any of this stuff would never have anticipated. So I think that what we determined at our last meeting and why we have this document, which is file IIBA Elementary Class Size Guidelines, is what we ultimately wanted to bring back to the full committee, which is, you know, giving the administration guidance as to what we feel is appropriate, but understanding that there's got to be, you know, all kinds of variation based on, you know, student needs and, and all the levels and all the things. So the, what's here in, and Peter can correct me if I'm misremembering, what's, what we have here in blue is, is the changes that are proposed. It's basically adding grade 7 to 12 to the existing guidelines, which did not include those grades, and just recognizing the variety of factors that, you know, that goes into this so that we're, you know, letting the administration know that these are our targets, but we understand that there are a lot of variations that will be required. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I think so. I think, you know, one thing we've talked about a lot in budget subcommittee and in this committee over the last several years, as budgets are tight, is we are balancing, what we do as a district in the best needs of students, also within the available resources of the community. And, you know, we're very aware of that this year in particular because we know it's a challenging year. I think what we were looking for as an administration is some general guidance around class sizes. It's not a lock, locked-in-stone type of a policy, so we wanted to leave some room for that. If the committee told us, we actually want secondary classes of 10 students or 15 students, we would make a budget based on that. And if the committee said, we want, you know, elementary classes of 40 students, we would make a budget based on that. Now, neither is necessarily appropriate or, you know, a great use of the resources, but the general guidance that, you know, we're proposing is grade 7 through 12 really should be fairly consistent with what we're already doing in 4 through 6. We're not looking for larger classes intentionally. That's not the best needs of students necessarily, but looking at where our classes are now, it's really to have us thinking about how you want us balancing, balancing resources across the district to make sure they get to where kids are. So that's the reason that we're doing this policy. I want to be really clear, is to give us guidance in developing this budget. And then really just recognizing, as you heard from Joni and Jim, the older the kids get and the more choice they have in schedule, there's a lot the older the kids get and the more choice they have in schedule, there's a lot more variety. And as kids progress through the educational system, sometimes the disparity of learning needs can actually grow wider. And so recognizing that and giving us the flexibility to balance that, you know, within our class sizes is also important.
So this is a first read, so if you have comments, questions, or suggestions, please send them to Ginny, not me. Send them to Ginny. She'll be delighted. So then we will see this again based on comments for a vote in two weeks. Very good. Thank you very much. And then I think that I need warrants, who's got?
I move that the school committee vote to approve the below-listed warrants totaling four million eight hundred forty-two thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars thirty-five cents. AP vendor warrant as follows, twenty-three dash zero one zero A dated eleven seventeen twenty twenty-two in the amount of five hundred ninety-five thousand thirty-two dollars sixty-eight cents. Payroll vendor warrant as follows, twenty-three dash zero one zero PR dated eleven seventeen twenty twenty-two in the amount of one million two hundred twenty, two hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars ninety-eight cents. Payroll warrant as follows, P twenty-three ten dated eleven seventeen twenty twenty-two in the amount of three million twenty-two thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars sixty-nine cents.
So moved.
I'm going to give it to, to Ben because he put his mic on. So Adam moved, Ben seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're all set. Right, that passed unanimously, bills are paid, woo-hoo. Peter, would you like to highlight anything before we adjourn?
There's still twenty pages left in the packet of FYI information. Actually, there's some nice information out of Case Collaborative I would like to draw your attention to. You know, that's a fantastic educational collaborative we belong to. It also outlines board member responsibilities that I wanted to make you aware of, as well as an update to you that we're required to provide. So I wanted to just make sure you had that information, know that I serve on the board as the superintendent. And just so you have a general sense of what my responsibilities are to the board.
I want one point of clarification on that, considering the fact that we were in another collaborative that had financial issues. Is the Case Collaborative in a good financial standing?
The Case Collaborative is actually in outstanding financial standing, and we've been receiving credits back every year because the reserves that they've accumulated exceed the maximum allowable by law. So we've been receiving tuition credits toward the next year, you know, for the last several years.
Excellent, thank you. Move to adjourn.
Adam and everyone, can we just say everyone seconded? No? Amy, Amy got it. All those in favor? Good night, y'all. Thank you for sticking around.